Item 3B, City Administrators' Report. Are there any questions? Mr. Burlowetz.
I would just entertain any questions from the council, when staff is here as well to address any.
If we see none, we'll move on to item 4. Review and discussion without action of items on the agenda of the regular council meeting this evening at 6:00 PM. Begin with item 3. Approval of Minutes and Advisory Committee Reports. 3A, Approval of Agenda. Approval of Consent Agenda. Approval of Minutes of the March 10th Regular and Pre-Council of the City Council.
And the Board of Equalization.
And the Board of Equalization, thank you. Item 4. Approval of Claims. 5, Special Presentations. 5A, Proclamation, National Service Recognition Day. B, Fair Housing Month. C, National Community Development Week. And D, Robyn DeBoer of BKD, Presentation of the Auditor's Report, Financial Statements for the Year-End September 30, 2013, and Acceptance by the City Council. Item 6, Liquor License, None. 7, Ordinance for Adoption, Third Reading. 7A, Ordinance Number 3747. C, 3760. Takes us to item 8. Ordinance for Public Hearing, Second Reading. 8A, Ordinance Number 3761. Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. Chris and I are having a few discussions on the terminology of setbacks and where those are required and how they are implemented. I may have a little bit more information after the council. We're going to review the building code and the zoning ordinance with respect to the projections into those yards. So it's nothing that's out of the issue, it's just how we define them based on a building code versus zoning ordinance.
No other questions? Item 8B, Ordinance Number 3762. C, Ordinance 3763. No questions? Item 9, Ordinance for Induction, First Reading. 9A, Ordinance Number 3764. Item 10, Public Hearing on Matters Other Than Ordinances. Mr. Cook.
Chris, I just got one quick question, and it might be too early, but I'm concerned with the site. I'm considering this as a site plan, part of that. It showed two roads that would be future-like roads. One going to 36th Street, that probably would be a right-in and right-out once the improvements were made, the 36th Street, so that'd be a road, 36th Street north of Capeport Road. Then they showed, then the diagram showed a small stub of a road that looked like it was heading north, that would have to go probably a block or two for a distance to hit Capeport Road. And I don't know, maybe this is too early, but is that something that we would address as far as the owner that's looking at developing this land? Would they cover 100% of those roads? Or would they be coming back to the city and asking for some assistance?
Do you have a site plan from the packet in front of you? It might be easier to...
Yeah, I will here in a second. Yeah, what I'm talking about, I'm looking on a diagram that shows, it looks like when they would be built, there would be a road that would come out to 36th Street and be used as soon as the motels, or I'm sorry, the apartments were built. And then on the north of that, to the north of that, it shows a dotted line of a road coming up to 36th.
The one with the solid lines will be the, a full access movement, both right and left turns in and out of there when the apartments are constructed. When 36th Street is improved, that one will become a right-in, right-out movement. The one to the north, where the dotted lines are, will be the full access movement to access both this property and the property to the north. It's going to be a shared access between the two. Constructing that on private property will be the responsibility of the property owner, the apron, or the, the approach off of 36th Street will be constructed as part of the 36th Street improvements.
Okay. And then on the diagram, the southwest corner says Future Road, and that would probably have to run about a block to get to Capeport, a block or two to get to Capeport Road. Now that, since it's on land that someone is going to purchase and develop, that 100% of that development of that road would be by the developers.
Yes, and that's, maybe road is not the, it's more of a drive to connect the two parts of the development and provide access down to Capeport Road from the apartment complex through the commercial development, again, to Capeport Road at the designated access points that have already been agreed on, on Capeport Road. Since we don't know what's going to happen exactly, how it's going to develop on Lot 2, we don't show, the road's not shown all the, you know, in a specific location, but prior, the agreement has prior to COs being issued for Lot 2, that road has to be addressed.
Okay. And I would imagine there'd be a fire issue as far as a second entrance into that apartment complex, so that road would somehow be further developed with future development.
Actually, as far as fire access, the one access, because there are less than 100 units, the fire department is okay with the one access, but once 36th Street is done, there will be two access points into, at least from the north.
Okay, that's right. Thank you.
Mr. Carmichael.
Chris, will the future access or ingress point on the northeast corner be a signalized interchange type?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions for 10A? Sina, moving on to item 11, Resolutions. 11A, Resolution Number 2014-07, Amending the Master Fee Schedule. 12, Current Business. 12A, Approval of the Appointment of the Following to the CDBG Committee. 12B, Approval of the Appointment of the Following to the Tree Board. C, Request Acceptance of $2,500 Celebrate Trees Grant. D, Request Permission to Seek Bids. E, Approval of Lease Camp Iowa, Camp Dodge, Iowa Training Facility for Annual SWAT Training. And 12F, Approval of Amendment to the Lease Agreement for the Roderick Building at 201 West Mission Ave. See no questions on this evening's meeting? Takes us to item number 5, Executive Session. Councilwoman, oh, Mr. Sullivan.
With respect to Executive Session, there was anticipation that we'd have further information on item 1, Real Estate Negotiations. We do not have any further information, so that does not need to be included in your motion.
Ms. Sanyuk.
For the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of an individual, I move to go into Executive Session to discuss threat of litigation and dealings with Morrow and Associates.
Second. Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any questions? Please vote.
All of you, yes.
Thank you. It is now 1:45. We will go into Executive Session where our discussion will be restricted to as stated by Ms. Sanyuk. Good afternoon and welcome to the Bellevue City Council Meeting, Monday, March 24th. First item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And if you could please remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Joseph Gastineau, did I say that correctly? Revival Tabernacle 226, Jefferson Street, Bellevue.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just want to say it's a great honor to stand here before this council. Scripture says to give honor to whom honor is due, and I want to give personal honor, and even from our church, and I know a lot of our citizens, to our mayor, our city council members, city administrator, city attorney, Chief Elbert, Chief Guido, all the police officers, fire department officers, and personnel, all Bellevue city leaders and workers. We want to thank you for your time and interest in our city. You know, it takes a lot of teamwork, and I think we've got a great team here in Bellevue. I think you ought to just give yourself a hand. Let us pray. Lord, we are humbled to stand here before you tonight, Lord, and before this great audience, and we're thankful, Lord Jesus, for your word. And we, your word says, "To acknowledge you in all of our ways," and you would direct our paths. We do that at this moment, and we pray for all those we've mentioned at this time, and we pray especially for all our police officers, our fire department personnel, and we pray that you will keep your hand upon them. You've done that, and we thank you very much. Continue to bless this city, bless all the things that are going on here. We pray make it prosperous, and we pray that you will bless those in the hospital, in the nursing homes, keep your hand upon our schools, and keep us safe, Lord. We acknowledge you and thank you for your presence. Bless this city council meeting at this time, we pray. In all the business affairs, we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Item 2, Kate, could you please call roll?
Mr. Carmichael?
Here.
Mrs. Sanyuk?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Knudsen?
Here.
Mr. Preister?
Here.
Mrs. Blood?
Present.
2A, This meeting will be conducted according to the Open Meetings Act posted in the entry to the council chambers. Item 3, Approval of Minutes and Advisory Committee Reports. 3A, Approval of Agenda. Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to approve.
Second. Second by Councilwoman Sanyuk. Any discussion? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Mr. Preister.
I'm just waiting for you to...
3B, Approval of Consent Agenda. Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 3C, Under Consent. Item 4, Approval of Claims, also consent. Item 5, Special Presentations. I have three presentations or proclamations, so I will be doing that in the front and center. First proclamation for this evening is National Service Recognition. If you would please come forward. You bet you have to come forward. Come on forward. And if you could come on this side, too, we'll do a semicircle here. There we go, looking good. Proclamation, National Service Recognition Day. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges, and whereas the nation's mayors are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet city needs, and whereas national service participation addresses the most pressing challenges facing our cities, from educating students for the job of the 21st century, and supporting veterans and military families, to providing health services and helping communities recover from natural disasters, and whereas natural service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership ability those who serve, and whereas national service participation serves in more than 60,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being. Whereas national service participation increases the impact of the organizations they serve with both their direct service and by recruiting and managing millions of additional volunteers, and whereas national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayers' dollars. And whereas national service participation demonstrates commitment, dedication, and patronism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors, and whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, City of Service, and mayors across the county, country, to recognize the impact of service on the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service on April 1st, 2014. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Rita Sanders, Mayor for the City of Bellevue, Nebraska, do hereby proclaim April 1st, 2014 as National Service Recognition Day, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our city, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities. Dated this day, March 24th, 2014. Squeeze in, okay.
And everyone for the side with her.
Yes.
Good evening, my name is Jamie Moore, and I chair Serve Nebraska, the Nebraska Volunteer Service Commission. And on behalf of Serve Nebraska and the State Office of the Corporation of National Community Service and the National Service Family in Nebraska that parts is in Bellevue serving Bellevue, I want to thank you and Mayor Sanders for this recognition of the service that these volunteers do each and every day in order to make our community a better place to live, in order to make our state a great state, the good life. Thank you.
You have a second proclamation for fair housing in Bellevue, Nebraska. Abby, if you want to come forward.
Whereas in 2014 marks the 46th anniversary of the passage of Title 8 of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, commonly known as the Federal Fair Housing Act, whereas this law guarantees that housing throughout the United States should be made available to all citizens without regard of race, color, creed, religion, sex, family status, disability, or national origin, and whereas the City of Bellevue recognizes that housing is a basic human need and economic stability, community health, and improved community relations are sustained by a diverse and affordable housing stock that is available to all, and whereas equal housing opportunity in a condition of life in our city that can and should be achieved, and whereas only the corporation, cooperation, commitment, and support from all residents of the City of Bellevue can bear to equality in fair housing and all opportunities to be removed. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Rita Sanders, do hereby declare the month of April 2014 as Fair Housing Month.
Our third and final proclamation, designating April 21st through the 26th, 2014, as National Community Development Week in Bellevue, Nebraska. Whereas the week of April 21 through 26, 2014, has been designated as National Community Development Week by the National Community Development Association to celebrate the Community Development Block Grant Program, and whereas the CDBG program provides annual funding and flexibility to local communities to provide decent, safe, and sanitary housing, a suitable living environment, and economic opportunities to low and moderate income people, and whereas the CDBG program has assumed increasing importance as an instrument for meeting pressing community development needs in affordable housing, job creation, and retention, human services, capital improvement, and public infrastructure. And whereas a week recognizing national community development will encourage local governments, nonprofit organizations, and community residents throughout the nation to reaffirm their significance and diversity of their local community development program efforts towards meeting the needs of persons in low and moderate income, and whereas the City of Bellevue will join the State of Nebraska, the City of Omaha, and the City of Lincoln, as well as other communities, in celebrating Community Development Week on April 22nd, 2014. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Rita Sanders, do hereby proclaim the week of April 21st through the 26th, 2014, as National Community Development Week, 2014. Robyn DeBoer of BKD, Presentation of the Auditor's Report and Financial Statement for the Year-End September 30, 2013, and the Acceptance by the City Council. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Appreciate the opportunity to be with you here today. We did meet with the Audit Committee last week and with management, and went through the majority of this information in detail. So what I'm going to do today is just kind of cover a few highlights for you, and then answer any questions that you may have. As far as changes from the prior year, there were some changes in auditing standards, which we did apply in our audit this year, and the most significant thing that you're going to see is in our auditor's report, and that's been reorganized a little bit, it's been changed just a little bit, but we did issue an unmodified or a clean opinion on the financial statements. The city also implemented a new accounting standard, and that mainly relates to the presentation of net assets, net position or equity of the, of the city, and so that's been implemented in the financial statements. The other significant change you're going to see in the financial statements is that management did write what's called Management's Discussion and Analysis, and that's on pages 3 through 12 of the document that you have, and that's a narrative description of the activity and the financial changes within the city. So that's a good way to kind of look at the overall highlights of what happened between last year and this year in the financial statements. Just a couple of things I'm going to cover. The statement of net position is on page 13, and this is government-wide, full accrual basis for the city, looking at all the assets, all the debt, total activity for the city. And you'll, you'll notice that total assets are $129 million, that's about a $5.3 million increase over the prior year. You'll also see that total liabilities are about 63.5, that's about a $5 million increase over the prior year. So overall, net position increased about $310,000. The other thing specifically to note there is unrestricted net position, so this is basically the balance that the city can spend without restriction or without someone else telling you how you have to spend it. That number of $7.8 million, that's about a $1.8 million increase over the prior year. So it's good to see that number increase. Excuse me, overall in expenses and revenue, both expenses and revenue were down a little bit compared to the prior year, but, but as I mentioned before, an overall $310,000 increase in net position, which is good. These financial statements do include the annexation of SID 212, because that did happen during last fiscal year. The details of that are on Note 16, if you would like to see those. The Schedule of Federal Expenditures is on page 49, and that shows about $1.7 million worth of federal expenditures that the city had during fiscal year 13. We did audit two programs, two major programs within that, within that funding, excuse me, and we had no compliance findings related to that testing. We did have an internal control-related finding related to preparation of the financial statements and significant journal entries, that's similar to what you have seen in the past. In prior years, you would have also seen a finding related to preparation of that Schedule of Federal Expenditures. We did test that process this year, we found that the city's numbers were accurate, and so that finding has gone away, so you won't see that in this year's financial statements. The other document you have is our Governance Letter, and that kind of talks about our responsibilities, tells you that we did audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, government auditing standards, and A133. And it, it discloses some information for you, and most of the rest of the document talks about just some best practices or some other ideas for management to consider, and I think they've been very open to some of the suggestions that we have in there. So overall, I would like to thank the Finance Department and other city employees for their help in this process, because it's a little bit cumbersome to pull together all the information that we ask for, so we appreciate all their help. But if any of you have any questions, I'd be happy to address.
Councilwoman Blood.
So you would say that the, the staff and the changes that we implemented so far have been effective?
Yes, that, I think there's still some things to work on, but I believe that the things that have been implemented have been very positive.
And one that I noted would be, we would benefit from additional staff?
I think that's certainly a possibility, yes.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. On page 54 at the top, it says, "In our opinion, the City of Bellevue, Nebraska complied in all material respects with the compliance requirements referred to above." all material respects with compliance requirements referred to above." So I'm assuming that that's full compliance, is full compliance. Everything was as it should be.
This relates to the federal, the two specific federal programs that we tested. And, and for their compliance requirements that we tested, yes, they were in compliance.
Okay. And on page 55, the summary of the auditor's results, you also list there are four categories. And I'm assuming that it's lowest to highest, but you can...
Yes, unmodified is, is what you want to see there.
Right. Unmodified is the highest, and that's the one that we were given.
And, yes, unmodified is the best opinion that you can get.
Right. And that's the one that's checked, and that's what the city got.
And that's what the city was given, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the council? See none? Mr. Cook will make a motion. Mr. Severson, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I'd just like to add that we are making progress here. We understand our financial situation, and we're actively managing the financials here, especially the expenditure process. You'll see that last year, we saved over $2 million in that active management where the city administrator went ahead and after we thought we had a good budget, he said, take another 5% off of there. And so there is active management. We aren't just sitting back and taking what's thrown at us. And I want to repeat that for anyone that looks at our financials, take another look at the part that we added, the management discussion and analysis that starts on page three. It tries to just give you an overview of the highlights. Yeah, there's still some numbers, but you aren't going to get away without putting some numbers in a financial report, okay? But I think it gives some good highlights. And what finance people do I have here?
Mark.
Mark.
Right behind you, Rich. Mark.
And so we got a couple, the, I want to thank them. Department, like Robin said, we had two weaknesses last year. We're down to one. We gotta, we gotta pick our fights. We, we don't have unlimited resources. But I do think it would be in the best interest of the city that we probably do put the right resources into, into play for the, for the future and clean it up even more. But again, I want to thank the finance department and the support from the council and the administration for helping us get to where we are. Yeah, there's work to do, but I think we're in a really good place.
Councilman Blood.
Actually, I, I just want to say the same thing. I want to say thank you to the finance department. This is the fifth, I think, that Steve and I have been through, the fifth audit. And, fourth, fifth or fourth. This is the best by far. What I like is that you've been very proactive, and that's always impressed me. Mark's done an exceptional job of informing the council about what's going on. Sometimes we have individuals that come and not having full knowledge of, of what the information truly means will say negative things about our finance department. And I have to say, I think you guys are exceptional. I compare our reports to other communities, other municipalities, and we are doing very well. And I know that you need another staff person to do even better. But I'm sure with the, the magic that you know how to do with the numbers, you'll figure out how to do that, so.
It's, it's not magic, Robin.
Maybe there's a grant out there. I just want to, but I just wanted to say a personal thank you, sitting on the council and seeing five of these audits. I, I'm appreciative of the work that you've done, so thanks to you and your staff.
And, and part of it is, as Pastor Gastino mentioned, working together and...
I agree.
Everybody working together. Since I've gotten here, all of the directors and the other people in the city, now, they, they might not like it when we say no or the budget process, but I do think they have a pretty good understanding, and we talk candidly between ourselves.
I would concur.
And again, Mr. Severson, thank you to you and your department. Really appreciate it. Thank you. Now I think we have someone that would like to make a motion. Mr. Cook?
I'd like to, real quick comment. Rich, I want to thank you and your staff also. Thank you for all the hard work you put in there. And I just want people to know the audit committee did meet, we did consider the financial statements and the findings, and we were satisfied with the response from our management. So I'd like to make a motion that the city council accept the auditor's report and financial statements for the year ended September 30th, 2013.
Second.
Can we do Eunice in there?
Yeah.
Second by Mr. Knudsen. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item six, liquor license, none. Item seven, ordinance for adoption, third reading. 7A, ordinance number 3747. Kay, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 3747, an ordinance to repeal sections 29.5-1 through 29.5-25 of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to the composition of the Bellevue Tree Board, Arborist licensing provisions, and penalties for violation of same, to add new sections 29.5-1 through 29.5-29 pertaining to the composition of the Bellevue Tree Board, Arborist licensing provisions, penalties for violation of same, and license revocation procedures to repeal sections 29.5-1 through 29.5-25 of the Bellevue Municipal Code as heretofore existing and to provide an effective date.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank everybody that's been engaged in this process over the past months and actually a year since we started this process. So it's been very deliberative. I thank Councilman Carmichael for his attention and his past experience in having been on the other end where he had to enforce these things. So I think we have the revocation part in a good form now rather than just a reference to plumbing codes, so it's specific to trees. I thank Councilman Cook also for his input in raising some questions. We essentially have rewritten the ordinance, but most of it is the same information. We've added clarity, we've specified who has authority, and I think it's now in a more logical sequence. So you can follow, in the first 12 sections, it relates to the city. The next component relates to the licensing provision, and then the final component of it, and appropriately, is regarding the tree board itself. A recent article that was in the, our Nebraska Review that we all get from the League of Municipalities stated that community trees provide $77 million in benefits from protection, pollution prevention, and carbon capture. And that's a pretty sizable contribution. The whole idea of what we're trying to do is to protect our trees, to look at them wisely, to replant them, to monitor them, to prevent when diseases come through. That's the goal, and I think we've achieved that. And with that, I will explain what I'll do. I, I want to move the third proposed amendment, so I will make the motion in a minute to do that one. It's been sent to everybody over a week ago and has, it's on the agenda currently. There is still two words that I had asked to be removed, and I just caught those two. And so I'll make my motion also to include that. But in 29.5-5, it says unless debarked. So it essentially would take those two words out. And the implication, what that means is that there can still be bugs or contamination in a tree even if it's been debarked. A lot of times the bugs may be just under the surface, but just because it's been debarked doesn't mean that it still, still doesn't provide a risk. So those two words in that section would be a part of my motion, and I can add to it if anybody has any additional questions. There may be additional amendments. I hope we got them all, but in the event that there would be, then after the motion is made, I think those amendments could then be discussed and proposed. And at the end, I hope Kay doesn't have to read this one again. So with that, I will make the motion that we approve the third proposed amendment, which will become ordinance number 3747, to include the striking in that proposal in section 29.5-5, Declaration of Nuisance, the two words unless debarked.
Second.
I didn't know if you had more to add. Councilman Sanjak.
I would like to make a motion to amend on section 29.5-3 applicability. This section gives full power to the tree board to designate a tree on private property as historically significant. And the reason I have a problem with that is because once it's declared historically significant, it cannot be cut down without the permission of the council. So I just disagree with the premise of declaring a tree on private property as historically significant and then requiring the homeowner to come in and ask permission from the council to cut that tree down. So I would remove private property from that section and string the sentences together so that it reads, "This chapter provides full power and authority over all trees, plants, and shrubs located within street rights-of-way, parks, and public places of the city," comma, "and trees, plants, and shrubs located on private property that constitute a risk hazard described therein." Everybody following me on that one? So I'm, I'm just saying I disagree with the premise of the tree board being able to designate a tree on private property as historically significant because when you do so, it cannot be cut down. And then correspondingly, in the section on historical trees, page nine, section 29.5-24, same premise, I would simply add the word "public" before "trees" on that first line so that it reads, "The city council, upon recommendation from the tree board, may designate certain public trees as historical trees within the city."
Mr. Sullivan.
Just, just so we can clarify, I know that Kat, Ms. Sanjak had read that through, but on 29.5-3, if you look at what's in your packet, in the second line, after the comma after city, inserted would be "and trees," comma, "plants." Trees, I think, was omitted and should have been added. And then secondly, constitute, I'm sorry, historical significance or would also be So it'd be, in that second sentence, you'd have trees added right before plants, and historical significance or in the third line is what her amendment is requesting.
Kay, did you get all that?
The historical significance or in that last line would be stricken, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Was that a form of a motion?
Was that a form of a motion, Kathy?
Yes, that's a motion.
I'll second for the sake of discussion.
Second by Mr. Carmichael? Discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. I respectfully disagree with Kathy on this. I think that the ordinance as written and rewritten provides that trees on private property, if they are so designated with the historical designation, which I find probably will not ever happen, but the possibility does exist that that could be, ultimately will come before the city council if and when a private property owner decides that they need to remove that tree. At that point, there will be a public hearing on the matter, just as any other proposal that affects private property in the city comes before us, and they will have an opportunity at that time to voice their opposition or support in a public forum.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman Carmichael. I would have said the same thing. I, I think it's very unlikely the tree board met, and the tree board could think of absolutely no tree in Bellevue that had historical significance currently on public or private property. They also agreed that just because a tree is old doesn't make it historic. So you can have, and Bellevue has the oldest oak tree and the oldest largest pawpaw tree in the state, and they're both on private property, but neither would qualify as a historic tree. Historic has much more significance, and if it's historic to the entire community, there should at least be some discussion. To make this amendment would take away even any discussion or option. So what you said makes sense, to at least have the public aware, to at least have the council involved. And the council has to make both the designation, designation, the tree board just recommends it, and that's in the definition that was requested, so we put that in, and they would have the public hearing later should it decide to be cut down. So I, I appreciate the position you've taken, and I would be opposed to this amendment. The other reason is because I, I'm looking at it, I've had a chance to look at all the other amendments, I'm not totally sure how in these two sections what we're doing may not have other consequences, and I'd rather not deal with that at this late a time.
Do we have any other amendments? See none?
Voting's just on the amendment.
So we're voting on Ms. Sanjak's amendment, is that correct? Please vote.
The vote is one to five. Motion fails.
Now we're voting on Mr. Preister's amendment. Do we need to refresh? Would you like Don to read that over? Please vote.
I deserve it.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Do I need to make the motion in as, because that was, right, I made it as...
You made that as part of it.
So it should be done, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's what...
Kay, did you get all that?
Yes. I made it as part of the motion to approve.
Yes, got it. Thank you. 7C, ordinance number 3759. Kay, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 3759, an ordinance to amend section 5-36 through 5-40 of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to licensing for carnivals, circuses, amusement shows, and other public events, to repeal such sections as heretofore existing and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Councilman Blood.
Motion to approve ordinance number 3759.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? Ms. Sanjak.
Motion to amend. I will make the required amendment so that the ordinance is consistent with the most recent version handed out by Kay with the yellow highlighted lines. So section 5-36, delete or that of another nonprofit organization, that's in yellow. B, delete "public" and replace it with "city-owned," that's in blue on your copy. Section 5-37, delete the words "praying that said license be granted," strike those words, that's on your copy. And then another one that was just found recently, section 5-38, last line, "and," and then flip the page over, "precinct" is omitted. Now that's, those are my amendments. And it will make it then consistent with most recent copy.
I would second that.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Now we need a vote on the motion as amended. Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. 7C, ordinance number 3760. Kay, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 3760, an ordinance to amend section 23-22 of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to the requirement of a bond to repeal such sections as heretofore existing and to provide for the repeal of section 23-22 as heretofore existing and to provide for an effective date of the ordinance.
Thank you. What's the wish of the council? Ms. Sanjak.
Amazingly, there's no amendments on this one. Motion to approve ordinance number 3760.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? See none? Please vote. Second by Counselwoman Blood. Any discussion? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
And it's my turn to thank the council. Those last two ordinances have a great deal to do with my office, and I appreciate the changes.
Thank you. Item eight, ordinance for public hearing, second reading. 8A, ordinance number 3761. Kay, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 3761, an ordinance to amend Sections 4.13, 5.06, and 5.07 of Ordinance Number 3619, the Bellevue Zoning Ordinance, regarding accessory structures in residential zoning districts, to repeal such sections as heretofore existing, to provide an effective date of the ordinance, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Thank you. I'll now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance number 3761, please do so at this time. See none, I'll close a public hearing. The third and final reading will be April the 14th. 8B, ordinance number 3762. Kay, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 3762, an ordinance to amend Ordinance Number 3619, Bellevue Zoning Ordinance, by adding new Section 8.14 regarding the keeping of horses in residential zoning districts, to repeal such section as heretofore existing, to provide an effective date of the ordinance.
Thank you. I'll now open for public hearing on ordinance number 3762. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. I see none, I'll close a public hearing. The third and final reading will also be April the 14th. 8C, ordinance number 3763. Kay, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 3763, an ordinance to amend Section 2-263 of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to the Civil Service provisions for filling of vacant positions, to repeal such section as heretofore existing and to provide for the effective date of the ordinance.
Thank you. Counselwoman Blood.
Mayor, before you open it up for public hearing, may I ask the chief of, the fire chiefs, or I say chief, please, a question for clarification?
Chief Guido, if you'd please come forward.
I've had a lot of citizens ask me exactly what this ordinance is about, and so I have a brief synopsis, and I just want you to tell me if I'm, if this is correct.
Okay.
So I can clarify it for the people that are going to be watching this tomorrow. So the city council, we approved a contract with the Bellevue Professional Firefighters Association in the fall of 2012, and that contract provided a procedure for filling multiple full-time firefighters' positions. And then it was our right, the city's right, to negotiate with the union on that procedure. The procedure is consistent with state law, and with this ordinance, the city council is just basically codifying the procedure set forth in that union contract that the city council approved. Is that correct?
That's the way it's been explained to me by the, both the attorneys for the city and from the negotiating team. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. I'll now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on item 3763, please do so at this time.
Please sign in.
If you could sign in first and then state your name, please.
Russ Herding. Mayor Sanders, members of the council, my name is Russ Herding, and I am the president of the Bellevue Professional Firefighters Association. Come here before you tonight to discuss some of our concerns and opinions on why we believe the city ordinance should be changed to meet the current BPFA contract that was established on December 10, 2012. Both the city and the firefighters, along with the highly-paid legal counsel, negotiated in good faith for months to come to an agreement. Under this contract, the part-time firefighters of Bellevue accepted below-poverty wages, no health insurance, no benefits, no pension, no holidays, no sick leave, and no vacation, in exchange for two items. One, the commitment from the city to hire full-time firefighters from within the current part-time department. And number two, having a true three-to-one referral process for the interview purpose. When the city council voted to accept the contract, you all agreed to uphold all the language set forth in the contract. Anything less than following the contract would be a clear violation of the contract and what I believe to be unfair labor practice. The narrow three-to-one process that is currently established is not fair to the current part-time firefighters. With most of the test scores being separated by only a tenth of a percentage, it's very difficult for me to watch a great fireman with plenty of knowledge and experience be passed up by possibly an inexperienced fireman who seems to take tests well. Let's give all these men a chance to interview and explain their knowledge, education, and qualifications for the job. Article 26 of the BPFA contract with the city of Bellevue, Conversion of Workforce, states in the last paragraph, "The city reserves sole discretion to hire the best qualified candidates." This council was thoroughly advised and understood this article. The language in the contract was constructed in such a manner that is very difficult to misunderstand. The contract clearly states that three names will be forwarded by the commission for each opening and goes even further to give an example that clearly states. If there are three vacancies, the commission will certify the highest-ranking nine names on the eligibility list as eligible for appointment, and the appointing authority will have the discretion to appoint any of those nine people without regard to the order of their referral to the appointing authority from the eligibility list. How can the city select the best qualified candidates when they have, when they can only choose from such a limited pool? The reason we agree to this language is because we made sure the fire chief and the command staff had an adequate pool of names to choose from. The SAFER grant is one of the most competitive grants in the fire service. It is unbelievable that two cities in Sarpy County have been awarded this grant. The city of Papillion has tested and is ready to hire, and I congratulate them on their efficiency. Members of the command staff have worked for years to obtain this grant to try to lay out the foundation for a great fire department. What a shame and laughing stock the city would look if we were to lose out on this grant, because the city did not honor their word and contract with its employees. Your legal counsel, the commission's previous legal counsel, and the commission's current legal counsel, all agree that the process is permitted and that there is no legal precedence that prohibits the forwarding of names as agreed to in our contract. The city of Bellevue hired the fire chief, assistant chief, battalion chief, and captains using the same criteria that was agreed to in the contract. The city has done in the past, agreed to do it in our contract, now let's change the ordinance and start building this fire department. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there others that would like to speak at this time?
Good evening. My name's Larry Chandler. I come to you tonight as president of the Eastern Sarpy Rural Fire District. I live at 17205 Paradise Road. I ask you to finish this. Let's just get it done. They're shorthanded, experienced people. Let's get all the pool there and get the people with experience. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Leigh Anne Gifford, 10111 South 11th Street, and I'm here as a concerned citizen and someone who's watched the fire department for many, many years. I was here 13 months ago and challenged the council to have a fully-paid, full-time fire department within 12 months. We can see how much that's progressed. You have yet to hire any additional full-time people, but we're very, very close. I'm very happy that the city did win the SAFER grant. It gives us two years to get people and have people before we actually have to start paying for it, which is great. I am in favor of the proposed changes to the ordinance. The civil service statute's clearly ambiguous. You know, anytime you get attorneys to disagree, there's an ambiguity in the statutes. But other first-class cities in Nebraska have inserted similar language in their civil service code or regulations. Both Papillion and Ralston look at their collective bargaining agreements in addition to the civil service statutes under specific circumstances. In Ralston, in their disciplinary procedures for police officers, which is governed by civil service, the procedures closely reflect what is outlined in the Civil Service Act, but then they add another section which states "labor contract." Those employees who are members of the Ralston Fraternal Order of Police, or FOP, shall be governed by the terms and conditions of the existing labor contract. To the extent that any provisions of this section conflicts with the FOP contract, the terms and conditions of the FOP contract shall govern the employees who are members of the FOP. So they say the collectively bargained contract supersedes the code for the Civil Service Act. Papillion Civil Service's rules and regulations state, whenever a position subject to civil service becomes vacant, the appointing authority shall make requisition upon the commission for the names and addresses of the persons eligible for appointment or promotion, and may decline to fill such vacancy for an indefinite period unless mandated by a specific collective bargaining agreement. So there, if they have staffing requirements that are bargained for and in their agreement, then the hiring authority doesn't have any choice but to fill certain vacant positions. So there, again, they're adding in. You look at the collective bargaining agreement. As long as the ordinance isn't contrary to the civil service statutes, it's going to be legal. The proposed change requires the city to look at the applicable collective bargaining agreement to determine the procedure for filling vacant positions, and the effect of this, as Mr. Herding pointed out, is to allow the city to fulfill its agreement with the Bellevue Professional Firefighters Association. The civil service statute itself is clear that when one position is open, you get three names. But when multiple positions are open, obviously it's in, you know, you can interpret it a couple of different ways. The statute reads, "If the commission certifies fewer than three names for each vacancy to the appointing authority," blah, blah, blah. So three names for each vacancy. That would imply that it really is three openings, nine names. And a cursory search of Nebraska cities that have online codes show that that language is found in other city codes. North Platte has it, Grand Island has it in their civil service rules, Carney has it. You know, and I know the Civil Service Commission previously has argued that you'll be imposing on their authority, you'll be violating law, but I find that to be very disingenuous. For one thing, the Civil Service Commission has failed to fulfill all of its statutory duties since the captains were hired over three years ago, possibly longer. I didn't check with any of the higher-ranking fire officials to see if they had received the rules and regulations from the civil service. That is something that clearly is outlined in the statute, but the civil service has failed to do that. Even more disingenuous is the fact that they're saying, "No, you can't do this," when the captains and the battalion chiefs were hired under this. In April of 2010, the commission had amended its rules to certify three names per open position for simultaneous hiring of multiple vacant positions. In October of 2010, for the captain's exam, they certified nine names for the three positions. Shortly thereafter, they changed their rules, and this council also amended its ordinance to the current method of pick one of the top three, add a fourth one, pick one, add the fifth, and so on. Now, that would be an acceptable procedure if the testing process was so robust that it absolutely ensures the top scorers are the best firefighters. It isn't. There's no way a paper-and-pencil test can tell you whether a person will work as a team member, will get along with others, will follow orders without argument, and will put his or her life on the line to save a citizen. I urge you to adopt this ordinance. The Civil Service Commission, in my opinion, needs to clean up its own act before it worries about what you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Dustin Tlakko. I'm coming to you as a concerned firefighter in the industry. I'm an Omaha firefighter. I got my start here about four years ago. I was hired on Omaha Fire roughly two years ago, and the only reason that I was able to be hired is because they interviewed everybody. There were 3,000 applicants for roughly 32 jobs, and because of Bellevue Fire, I was trained by a great process here. I was ready, ready for the job. So I went in there with a low test score, and my interview and the rest of the whole process showed through, and I was able to get hired. So I come to you concerned because, you know, do you want to be, in the middle of the night, the fire, you know, fire starts, the alarms are going off in your house, your kid's stuck on the second floor, and you want the kid that got 100, 100% on his test to come and drag your kid out, or do you want the person that's a ready, willing, and able firefighter to go in there and get the job done? Because that's what it's all about. It's not about test scores. It's about being able to do this job. And that interview process, we were talking about it today at the station, that interview process shows a lot. It really does. It shows, it's not only your character, your ability to get along with people, but the intangibles that, you know, and that, that test, all the test is, is math and reading and a few mechanical things. It has nothing to do with firefighting. So I'm a concerned firefighter in the industry because I want to see the best guys hired here, and I just ask that you keep an open mind when you're making your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. Would you repeat what you just said about what the test covers?
Yes.
I think you said that it doesn't cover anything about firefighting.
No, sir. The, the test covers mathematical equations, so basic math. It covers reading, comprehension. It covers a few mechanical things. So if Sprocket A turns clockwise, which, which direction is Sprocket C going to turn, things of that nature. Can you add 2 plus 2, things like that? It's a little bit more difficult than that. But it has nothing to do with firefighting. It's, it's a test where they just try to weed out some of the, some of the kids that, you know, probably shouldn't be there, but it really boils down to that interview process. It's so important.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Counselwoman Blood.
Mayor, I think you brought up a really valid point that hasn't come out really clear yet, is that when we did the survey for the community and we talked about the budget, the number one priority in the budget was safety. When we talked about rolling brown outs and we talked about having to make, possibly make cuts in the fire department, people were angry. Though I can't imagine what's going to happen if we're not able to pass this tonight, because we're looking at a few words and we're worried about offending the civil service, and I hate to offend volunteers, but we're worried about offending them, but I'm more worried about the citizens and their overall safety and making sure that whoever is interviewed are people that have experience, because I know that response times depend on that, and I know that my family's safety depends on that, and I think the vast majority of citizens feel that way, too. I can't speak on behalf of them, but I can tell you about the calls and the emails that I've gotten over the last few weeks. And people are unanimously concerned about what's going to happen to the fire department. We've asked Chief, Chief Guido to run the fire department with three wheels instead of four. We said, "Put together a fire department, work towards part-time fire employees, we'll figure it out in the future." Then they are savvy enough to get this grant, and now we're saying, "You know, we know that you worked really hard to get this grant, but we're not going to give you the opportunity to get the superior staff that you really need to, to get the job done." And that's what I feel is going to happen if we vote no tonight.
Are there others that would like to speak? Please do so at this time.
My name's Pat Schuster. I reside at 11651 Trumbull Loop. It's in Quail Creek. And I want to thank Counselwoman Blood for bringing out the most important part of this. There are stations being closed, the stations that are supposed to come and protect my family, my property. We need more firefighters. We know that. And so, number one, I'm going to ask you to pass this tonight. That's very, very important. But also, the pool of firefighters is very important. Give the chief the ability to pick the right people. This is not a job in, there's, there's nothing demeaning about cutting grass or, or fixing streets, but this is a job of people who are willing to risk their lives, to give up their lives. their lives, to protect their partner. Anyone that's been in public safety understands that. It's not about how smart this person is. It's about whether this person is willing and able to carry a child, or his partner, or an old man out of a burning house. That's what this is about. That's what the pool is about, and that's why the fire department is asking for the ability to pick the best candidates. I'm going to ask you again to please vote for this tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there others? You could state your name for the record, sir.
Gary Mixon, 3826 Giles Road. Just want to make a few points. I thought all the other speakers, Councilwoman Blood, everybody has done an excellent job in stating, I think what, my opinion is pretty obvious, the safety of the community is very The SAFER Grant, we've worked on it for years and years and years. You have an opportunity to hire 12 firemen, or firewomen as well, and you have that money pledged for two years. And brings up a word for me, was said earlier, magic. There's nothing magic in the budget that you talked about earlier. There's nothing magic about where you're going to get the money. It's going, it's going to come from the taxpayers, and they're willing to support it. They're willing to support the safety of the community. If you lose one dime of that grant, it will be an injustice to the community. The firemen from Omaha, about what it takes to be a fireman. I have three brothers on Omaha Fire, one retired now. People ask me, why wasn't I a fireman? I said, I didn't have the guts to be a fireman. It was not in my gene pool. All of the volunteer firemen from Bellevue over the years have sacrificed. They all have it. The paid firemen in Omaha, Papillion, the surrounding area, they all have it. There's something there. I cannot do that job. I would never even try to do that job. I commend them all. You, you talk about one instance, I'll, I'll share one. 9/11. How many firemen in New York were lost? How many went up to try to help people get out? Police, same way. Pay people fairly. I'm not here for anything else, just, you need to take care of whatever little nuance we have going on here and make sure the community's safe. And so with that, I, I could talk all day about a lot of other things, but you don't need to hear that. I, I think the most important piece has already been stated, and you have an excellent opportunity before you. And the other thing, too, about the SAFER Grant, screw this one up, and you won't, you won't get anymore. So, you know, just look at what needs to be done, move forward, let's get this thing resolved, and I thank you.
Thank you. Pass Mayor Mixon for your involvement. Thank you, appreciate it. Are there others? I see none. I'll close a public request to be heard. Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor.
A public hearing, thank you.
Public hearing is closed?
Public hearing is closed.
Okay to speak?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I, I see that we have a golden opportunity here, but before I make a, a motion to suspend the rules, I just want to make a comment, and, and that is, I, I don't see this as vilifying or the public, the Civil Service Commission overstepping their bounds. I think the Civil Service Commission was given a mandate, and they were following it to the letter as they understand it, and I respect that. So I, I don't see them overstepping their bounds. I see them doing their job. They are volunteers. It is a, a body that makes a referral to us and a recommendation, but ultimately, it's the council's responsibility. So I think they've done yeoman's work and yeowomen's work. I think they, they've done what they needed to, but now it's time, I believe, for the council to do the same. If we pass this ordinance, I think it actually helps the Public Service Commission. It gives two options to them, and it takes them off the hook. They've asked us for direction, we're giving them direction with this ordinance. So I think it helps them, I think it helps the city, because I think it allows the SAFER Grant to continue in its process, and I, too, don't want to do anything to hinder that. We've worked too long, too hard to try to get that money. To turn our backs on nearly $2 million and two years of paid firefighters and benefits when we're trying to build a fire department is not something I'm willing to, to do to our taxpayers. So I think we can move that forward, and it's got a short window on it. I don't want to lose one penny of that money either. And I think it gets us closer to the professionalism in our fire department that we need so that we have no more people who aren't rescued in a timely manner and who can be saved from either fire, or heart attacks, or other kinds of issues. And I think it's finally fair to our part-time firefighters. When I was in the legislature for 16 years, I heard every year from professional, from volunteer firefighters, that they needed incentives. They needed something to keep the service ranks going, because volunteers just couldn't keep doing it. And the legislature looked at it and looked at it, but we didn't come up with very much. So for all of those volunteer firefighters who do it out of the spirit of service, I'm grateful to them. I think this allows that experience to also play into the testing and the selection process. And I do trust our chief and all of our command staff and our city administrator to make wise decisions in selecting the very best firefighters that we can employ. And this SAFER Grant will give us an opportunity to be able to do it faster than we could do any other way, and I think that's good for all of Bellevue. Having said that, I will now make a motion to suspend our statutory rule requiring three readings, so that now that we've had a public hearing, we can vote on this ordinance tonight.
Second. Mr. Sullivan.
Just so you're aware, that it takes a supermajority vote, and the mayor cannot vote, so it would take five votes and a positive for this to proceed to waive the statutory rule.
Mr. Preister.
The vote is five to waive the rule, but not on the motion that would follow later to actually vote on the ordinance?
That's correct.
Okay, so we just need five to get to a vote?
That's correct.
Thank you for that clarification.
Any further discussion? Any discussion? No? I see none, please vote.
Excuse me. The vote is four to two. Motion does not carry, correct?
Correct.
And that motion?
But that's only to waive the statutory rule.
Right, so the vote, we, we would vote at the next meeting, which is what date?
14th.
14th of April. April 14th, then.
Councilman Blood.
I know this is kind of closing the door after the horse got out, but can you clarify how that's going to affect the grant, Chief?
Initially, we were given a grant that said that you had a period of 90 days to begin the recruitment period. That 90 days, also, it, it mentioned in the acceptance letter that we'd immediately begin the hiring once the city council accepted the grant. Since then, we received some information that said that we, that the website, for FEMA website, mentions a recruitment period and then a performance period. And the question was asked if we would in fact lose money, all of the money in the performance period, which is a two-year period, or if we would lose a portion of that. So I asked Chief Gibb Alisco to contact the FEMA representative that has been assigned to the fire department and ask her, we had a conversation, and in that conversation, she did say that there is an expectation that we move forward as quickly as possible because there are other cities that are in dire need, and that there is a period of time that can go by without necessarily penalizing us. And what they mean by penalizing is I took, and Chief Gibb Alisco, if you want to come up here, that would be fine, because he's the one who actually spoke with her, but my understanding is that, that they have a dire need in other cities and that they have a period of, of time in the first quarter that they need to get that money to those individuals who need it, or by federal statute, they lose the opportunity, is that right? To give that money to anybody. And so if we're not going to use it, they want to know that immediately, and they want to know if there's going to be a lawsuit, and they said they would handle that on a case-by-case basis. Did I summarize that accurately? So the question that you asked, I, I can't answer. I, I, what I can tell you is that Chief Gibb Alisco has, has worked very hard to establish a relationship with the FEMA people. And in doing so, he has conveyed to them, as I did to all of the members of this council earlier today, the situation in which we find ourselves, and it has not, not solely to do with just money, it has to do with the safety of the firefighters and the citizens on a daily basis, and you know where we're at. So when I say that there is an issue that, that can happen with our relationship with FEMA, it will certainly be damaged. I think that she's incredulous that, that it's this difficult for us to receive this money.
Just to make you all aware, I've been in contact with Tina Godfrey of FEMA. She's been great. FEMA's main contention is that they want to give us the money. They want to give us the $1.73 million. We graded out as being one of the most needy fire departments in the country. The position that we're in now is, I have to report to FEMA tomorrow that this did not pass. They've also...
Just the, the motion to vote on it tonight didn't pass. We could, it could pass on April 14th.
I understand that, but at, at the same time, they want to be updated, and, and they knew the process. They, they knew what we were telling them. It's, what we have is a 90-day recruitment and testing period. That's your 90 days, and what you're supposed to do in that period of time is put the app, or put the, the application out so people will apply, gives you an opportunity to test, gives you an opportunity to do the physicals, to do the interviews, to put out conditional offers of employment, then it gives you the medicals, the psychologicals, anything else that's needed by NFPA 1582, that's going to be required. Now, there's a grace period in there that they'll give you, maybe for the first quarter, and that's usually done with the bigger cities, such as Detroit, Miami, San Jose, cities that will have thousands of employees apply, and people who will take a, a long time to get all of those things done. Many of those cities use the CPAT, which in and of itself could take up to two months to get done, so they recognize that. One of the things that they made clear is that if we accepted the grant, we had to move on it immediately. What they know is that we've already completed the written, we've already completed the physical, and the list has already been certified. So they want to know the status of everything that happens from that point forward. Now, I do not believe that they're going to pull the grant. They're not going to pull the grant this week, just because I, I write them a letter and say that at, at this time, they've held off and they're going to wait another two weeks to fix the, the issue. They're well aware of the issue of the statutory difference between the getting the 12 and, and getting 36 names referred and getting the 12 names, or getting 12 hires and only 14 people being referred. So they fully understand the legality of this. What they're concerned with is that in September 30th of this year, what will happen? The money goes away and has to go back to the treasury. So the concerns they have is that if, if, if there's a lawsuit that does take place, that there's no way that a lawsuit or the subsequent possible appeals that are going to transpire are, are going to happen by September. And then what they'll do is they'll collect all of the information that I've already given them, and then they're going to start making some decisions. They're going to work with you, they want to work with you, they want to give Bellevue the money, but at the same time, their highest priority is to get rid of the money. And they're going to either find us to give it to, or they're going to find somebody else to give it to. So the longer we wait, because i- if they give it to another city, then they're going to have the same 90-day window to try to do the recruitment, the testing, and, and things like that, and they have to give that city the time to do that. So if the deadline's September 30th, they're going to need it by July. So they're very concerned about the lawsuit aspect. They give a lot of leeway towards cities that are having problems getting the testing completed, but, but this is a, a different kind of animal, and they do things on a case-by-case basis.
Councilman Blood.
And so when did our clock start ticking? When we accepted the grant, and when did we accept the grant?
Our, the important dates to remember is, I believe, is February 28th.
Right.
The 90 days, I believe, they, they told me it was May 21st is the end of our 90-day window.
Good stuff.
And then the first quarter, if you don't have them hired boots on the ground by the end of the first quarter, which I believe was July 28th, they want to know why. But in, in our instance, it's a little bit different because it's not the testing and the application process that's, that's holding it up. It's going to be a potential lawsuit, and, and they know if it goes to a lawsuit, then the chances of it getting done by September or, or July 30th is nil. I think, and I asked legal counsel about that, but I don't think there's any way that this is going to be settled by then.
So ultimately, oh, I'm sorry, I just want to finish my thought here. So ultimately, we're asking you to get all these people hired within three months? Less now?
Well...
Because that would be April, May, and June, because July, they're boots on the ground.
Yes, and, and that's at the latest, but the fact is, is if, is if they find that there's going to be a lawsuit involved, I, I, I think we have to report that immediately, and, and then there's going to be decisions made, because one of the things that she, that she did state right in her letter is that they, they want you to decline this if, if you're not going to take it, and they want the money back as soon as possible, so then they can give it to another city. And if you don't do that, they'll, they'll remember our name, I think, in the future, and we will be hurt.
I want to mention, too, that the 90-day recruitment period, once that ends, which has already started, is that any money lost during that time is lost. We don't get that portion of it back, even if they don't take the entire grant, or if we end up taking and accepting the grant, still getting it, the portion that we lose after the 90-day recruitment period is gone. Am I right on that?
Yeah, it's about, I, I believe it's about $2,300 a day after the 90 days.
Councilman Blood.
But ultimately, Pat, since we've already had the vote, there's really nothing we can do now but move forward, or is there according to Robert's rules? Should someone want to change their vote?
The only way that you can move forward is if there was a motion to reconsider by those who were considered on the winning side of the vote.
Mr. Preister.
Mayor, I would like, given the gravity of this situation, it's unusual, but K, I would like to change my vote, voting for to voting no, and then I would like to make a motion to reconsider the vote just... a motion to reconsider the vote just taken.
I don't think you can change your vote.
I believe our rules allow me to change my vote, as long as I do it while we're on the subject.
I think it says immediate.
We haven't left the subject. I believe I'm within my rights.
Kay, would you like to?
I think the word immediate is in there somewhere, but Pat can find that in this, in the code book.
Can't say as I've run into this one yet, so...
Oh, whoa, 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 you need to use the code book, not the policy book. Do you have that on your computer?
I got it right here.
There you go.
And while, while he's looking that up, just, just a comment, I, I would normally not want to do this, but this is serious. We're talking a lot of money, the safety of a lot of people, and I know that people take principled stands, and I do it too, and want things to be done the right way. I respect that. In this case, we also have a contract with our firefighters, and that contract was just done in 2012. That contract, we also need to be principled about, and we also need to honor. This, allowing that to be a part of the consideration, I think is respecting and honoring a contract we entered into. We, we can't turn our backs on something, whether all of us did it, or some of us did it, we're all bound by it as a city. And the four of us who have been on the council for a long time know that we have been trying for this safer grant for a lot of years. We can't turn our backs on that much money. This is just a vote, to vote on it. I think you can vote against it if you want to, and not support the ordinance, but at least give us a chance to take an up or down vote. So you can still take a principled stand if you choose that, and make your positions known, and, and I respect that. I respect it either way. But at least, let's, with the clock ticking, let's not turn our back on one dime of all that money. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor.
Mr. Carmichael.
In my opinion, Don, we have not turned down the money. We voted at last council meeting to accept the money. The issue is not turning down the safer grant. The issue, in my mind, is the conflict that we have between a, a union agreement, the city code requirements, and as I see it, the state statutes. I have seen nothing other than, than opinions that we need to go to the, to the statutes to honor the, the union contract over the city code requirements. I haven't had an opportunity to review that. My vote for no strictly is to not allow second and third readings tonight. We still can approve this at the next council meeting. That's the only reason I did it.
And I appreciate that. The clock is ticking though, and in those fourteen days, we could be losing some of that grant money. We could also be sending a message, because what we do tonight is obviously needing to be reported, and if we're delaying, they're looking at that. And I don't want to create any situation where there's any uncertainty that we want that grant. We voted to approve it, I agree, but this is saying we're still waiting even longer, and I'm just very concerned about that.
Don, I don't want the threat of litigation by the union to sway me to vote one way or the other, and that's how I feel about this right now. The threat that they're going to sue us if we don't honor the contract. In that context, I deserve two or three weeks to go look at the statutes that, that our legal counsel has given us, that will tell me definitively, or definitively, that we can honor that contract. I don't think that's too much to ask. I don't think, matter of fact, we've passed all the tests, we've done the physicals, everything's there. Perry, can you tell me how long it's going to take from that point on, once we approve it, for you to hire those people from that list?
I can't tell you conclusively, because if you do hand over, I don't know how many people have passed the test, Councilman Carmichael, just know.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to come to the mic. I don't know how many people have actually passed tests, I'm not privy to that, but if we do do three for one, and we hire twenty-one people, that would be sixty-three interviews. And then after that, once we make the selection process, they'd have to go through the NFPA physicals, and I have no idea how long that's going to take. I have expressed concern, because it will be twenty-one more days that will go by between now and the next council meeting. Is that right, Rich?
Yes.
So we've lost a number of days, and I think we will get past the recruitment period, but I can't say that for sure. I don't know. There's, there's some intangibles here, that I can't, I can't allow for. No, no.
Mr. Cook.
I'm not voting against that grant. We got a process in place, there's been a lot of discussion back and forth. My vote is not against that grant. I have full intention of that grant being accepted by the city, and, and used by the city. We are so much farther ahead of the game, if somebody four weeks ago was given this grant, they would probably post it for a couple of weeks, and then you got to figure out, they have to figure out with their civil service commission, the test that they want to do. We could be sitting here right now with not, not even a test being given if we had to start from scratch. So I, I'm just...
In the past, it's taken six months with Councilman Carmichael, or Councilman Cook.
I don't, I don't know where you're getting that we can get this done, because we don't have any history of doing it, except for what we've had in the past using the civil service commission rules. It took six months for me to get my assistant chiefs, it took five months to get the battalion chiefs, and it took six months to get the captains.
But what I'm saying, Chief, is that the test is done, people have been given their scores.
The interviews are not done, though. The interviews are not done.
I didn't say the interviews were done. What I'm saying is, if we had to start from scratch, I don't think we'd be as far along as we are right here today, having people knowing where they rank in their scores. I'm saying is, is these people that issue this grant are full aware that it takes cities quite a length of time to put this all together. And we're already talking May, July, June, July. You, you know there's a list, it's been certified, there's some step, you know there's going to be promotions, there was nine, and then we got the safer grant. There's some steps that you can start moving through with these people, as far as sending them to some tests and stuff like that. You know that you're going to be interviewing them, and then making the selection to who you want to appoint.
We, we won't be sending anybody to test until after we interview them. We won't be sending anybody to test, because it would be a waste, we'd send sixty-three people, we wouldn't know who to send.
I'm saying that you can start that process. You know you're going to get at least a couple dozen, close to a couple dozen.
I don't know which dozen we're going to select ultimately, so I can't send them to physicals, is what I'm trying to tell you, Councilman. I don't know who those are going to be.
Well, I, I just think that if we would have got the safer grant four weeks ago, then I don't feel that we would be done with posting it, and giving the test, and having these candidates already have their scores.
I, I don't know how to answer it, other than to say that I can't predict how long it will take.
I understand.
And if we go past that period, we lose money, period. That's all I can tell you. It, it's all, ultimately up to you. I, I, you know, I, I recognize that the council's making this decision, not me. I'm here to tell you, and you've asked me a question, and I'm giving you my answer. I don't know if we will go past the recruitment period and get into the money and lose money at that point or not.
Just quickly for clarification, we can't send anybody to get any medicals done without conditional offers of employment. You can't send someone to go get medicals without a conditional offer, that's my, my history of it, and I've done, done quite a bit of that. One of the big concerns here, and I got your point, there's time, you know, you can do the interviews, do the physicals, you can get that done. The biggest concern that we have right now is that the civil service commission is going to get their own attorney. Now, that, that attorney comes back and says, no, you guys are wrong, the city attorney's wrong, I'm right, and now you got a dispute. And, and that's where we're going to lose it. And we're not going to lose it with the timeline, and even if we did, say, say we lose a, a month and we'd lose $2,000 a day, okay. But where you're going to run into trouble is when that other city, when that other attorney that they're going to hire comes back and says, no, that ain't the way to do it. Then you got a problem.
But, but sir, that can happen with or without a vote tonight.
But tonight, you're, you're giving the clear direction to them to, to take the action. That's all, that's all I have, sir. I, I, I'm just trying to do the best I can.
I understand what you're saying. I think for me, that the state law is clear, the responsibility of the civil service commission. And from my understanding, they have a meeting in, this week, or sometime in the near future, and they have not looked at this, they have not considered it, they have not had it on an agenda where they voted it, that would maybe help me with some guidance, or whatever. I, I think that we are missing a critical step by bypassing the input received from the civil service commission. I'm not against this grant. I, I have full intentions of supporting this grant and moving forward and the city getting this money. There's a civil service commission that has a responsibility for hiring, promoting, and for discipline to make sure the processes are fair.
Thank you.
And I think we need to respect their, their responsibility.
Mr. Knutson.
I guess I'm just really disappointed in this whole deal. We've got an opportunity here that we will probably never see again, and, I mean, it's just kind of disappointing that we can't come to some terms. We, last week, or two weeks ago, we delayed, not, we didn't go with all three readings on one night, because we gave the civil service commission, they were supposed to meet the next day to have a meeting, and then they chose to delay it again to this next meeting that they're having. Okay, what happens when they meet sometime this week, and they decide, well, they're going to delay it again, or else they decide they are going to file a lawsuit, and we haven't given them direction on which way we want to go? And that's what part of this has been all, all along. And I'm sorry, but myself, I was a volunteer firefighter for Bellevue for a lot of years, and we've never had an opportunity like this. We need to move forward on this. When we, when I was a volunteer, I sat many a times on a ramp waiting for people to show up, and knowing that there was somebody waiting for me to help, go, come and help them. Right now, that's, we're going to get into that same situation if we don't do the right thing here, and I'm just really disappointed.
I want to go back to Mr. Preister changing the vote. I believe Mr. Sullivan has an opinion.
Well, I actually learned something today. Section two dash eighty-nine does allow you to change the vote. It says immediately and following the vote prior to the next order of business. So if you chose to change your vote, you can do so, well, that's an exercise in futility, we'll see.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. I would like, Kay, I would like to change my vote to a no, so that I can then make a motion to reconsider the vote just taken on the ordinance.
Second. So he just changed his vote, but he's making a motion?
Now he's made a motion to reconsider the vote on waiving the statutory reading, and anybody can make the second, and Ms. Blood has made the second. So this is merely to have a motion to reconsider the vote, it's not a vote on it specifically.
I think they've all understood, and no questions. Please vote.
And the vote is still four to two.
That does allow the motion to come on the floor again now to waive the statutory reading, so that is now what is up for vote, is to waive the statutory reading for three times.
And that will need five votes, is that correct?
That will still need five votes.
Councilwoman Blood.
Mayor, you know, we frequently talk amongst the council about what we'd like to do and not do, because we're the legislative body, but I think that as the figurehead for the city of Bellevue, I think it would be important, and I don't know if it's going to be good or bad, to hear your views on this before we vote.
On the vote for, to waive the next, the two weeks?
Right, to vote and vote tonight.
I think it's important that we vote on that, on this ordinance, ordinance number three seven six three this evening. Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. Since I made the motion to reconsider, I feel a responsibility, well, I feel a responsibility anyway, to the citizens of Bellevue, to at least try. I feel a little bit like the frog that's about to be swallowed by the heron, and it's grasping the heron's neck, trying to choke it to keep from getting swallowed. But in the interest, I don't know what I can say to convince people, especially after even the reconsideration vote. But we're talking about time and two weeks, and I, I think Councilman Knutson said it well, the civil service commission has already delayed it two weeks, when they told us they were going to be looking at it after our last council meeting. I wish that had happened, I wish they had given us some feedback. They have had this before them, they know of it, they could have contacted us individually, they could have given us more information, they didn't necessarily have to do it in the next meeting that's coming up, they could have done it at any time. This doesn't really take away their authority, it gives us another option, it allows more people to be interviewed. I think rather than take the chance, as the chief said, that we might miss some of that money, and I think that's a very good chance, because these hiring practices never go, ideally, anything in government, case in point, takes a whole lot longer than anybody ever anticipates. Talk about the tree ordinance, a whole year, over a year, on something simple. To hire people that are going to be saving lives, and their lives and other lives are going to be on the line, shouldn't be done rushed. This has been discussed, our attorney, I believe, said, we don't even need this. So this is more of a formality of what we're doing tonight than a legal necessity. All we're doing is providing an option, but we're sending a clear message that the council is in charge. The, the civil service commission is the tail wagging the dog, it seems. They are the advisory body, they're not the body that makes the decisions. They advise us, and that's exactly what was being requested in the tree ordinance. The tree board shouldn't have all that control, it should be vested in the council. That's exactly what's being done here. Some of us are saying that the public, or the civil service commission is in charge. They have to tell us what they want to do. We are in charge, we need to claim our responsibility, we need to make the decision. This is not a big policy stretch. I don't know what else I can say, if I did, I would say it. I respect everybody's decisions, I respect the civil service commission. They're doing what they think is right, this is what I think is right, and I really believe we need to move forward for the best interest of all of the people in Bellevue.
I would also like to say, it's really not two weeks till the next council meeting, it's really three weeks. We have the week of the thirty-first, the seventh, and then the fourteenth is when we meet back, so that was actually three weeks. So just for clarification, where are we now? We are...
Motion to reconsider at this point, which will require five votes, just to even take a vote. Just give us the chance to take the vote, you can vote against it if you wish, that's fine, but to wait, now we know more than two weeks, to wait three weeks, I, I think it's certain that we're going to lose money, I'm convinced of that now. Just give us the chance for the vote, that's all I ask.
So we have a motion, do we have a second, Kay? Is that noted? Second by Councilwoman Blood?
It's just back on the floor, it was from its original motion.
Could I interrupt for a minute? Could you, could anyone reopen the public meeting?
Any one of the council want to reconsider?
Motion to reopen public hearing.
Second.
I need to make sure Kay has all that.
I do.
You do? Okay, please vote. All voted. Thank you, we'll reopen the public hearing on this item, if you'd like to speak, please do so.
I do want to add that it was January of, of 2013 when we first started this process with the civil service and requested to post. So, what seemed like a very easy thing to do, to move forward, we're here over a year later, and we're still struggling with this. So I want you to keep that in mind when we think we can get something done quickly. It's been over a year and two months, three months now, from the day we first started and moved forward with the posting. And we anticipated that it would take us a long time to get through this process, and the reason that we asked that posting at that time was so that we would have a list ready and in place, so that if we were to get the safer grant, we wouldn't lose any money.
money. So I, I, I'm asking you to look at the timeframe and the history of the decision-making process that's already gone on, and consider whether or not you really think we're going to get there in time, because I don't have much hope for it.
Gary Mixon. Um, I had a few comments for, um, Councilman Carmichael, and one being, you want another two weeks to look at the statute. Um, I know both you and Mr. Cook are newly elected. This council ratified this agreement, if I'm not mistaken, in two thousand twelve. And my point to both of you gentlemen, I think everybody's aware of, well, I'm hearing everybody's aware of the timelines, but yet, you two gentlemen don't appear to be aware of the timelines, or you wanna wait till later? This is very critical, I think you understand that, you've shared that, I think both of you have. Um, we don't need any more lawsuits in the city of Bellevue, we've had plenty of those over the years. And, you know, you've had attorneys do all of this. I don't know if either of you gentlemen have law degrees, I don't know. But I don't understand when lawyers have looked at this, you had, um, a resident go over several other cities that have similar things to this, and it's all happened. I guess I would really like to hear what is driving, what's behind delaying this, other than, well, I didn't look at the statute.
No, Mr. Mixon, the, the issue isn't whether I looked at the statute or not, or the SAFER grant, the issue to me is the list. We've developed the list, our city code stipulates that we hire based on three most qualified, you take another position, you add another qualification in, and you move down the list, hire the most qualified. I'm sorry that the test wasn't what was expected, that wasn't from me. We did the physical test, we did the written test, exactly like every other department in the state does, we have the same qualifications in our city code. If it was such a huge deal when the, when the contract was signed, we should've changed our city code in two thousand twelve to parrot the ordinance, we didn't do that. There's a conflict there. Even by Mr. Gibellisco's statement, if they bring that attorney back on that Civil Service Commission, he's gonna tell these guys, no. They know that there's a conflict legally in that opinion. That's what concerns me, sir. It's not because I don't look at it and I don't think about it, I've thought about this since I got on this council, sir, at length.
The comment you made regarding, um, the comment you just made, I don't know about what all the testing and everything that's gone along, but I think you made a reference that the lawyer for the commission?
I'm just speaking what, saying what Mr. Gibellisco said.
Okay.
I think he was thinking in hypotheticals.
Okay.
Well, I'm, I'm not dealing in hypotheticals here, there's a lotta daggers being thrown right now, Perry.
I understand, I'm just clarifying before you counsel.
I don't, I don't know if anybody's thrown any daggers, I'm just trying to get, get an understanding of what is holding up something very important.
To me, there's a conflict in the list, and how the qualifying, the qualifications on that list, they've already been done, that list is made and certified. Now the hiring process starts, and how do we go through that process?
Okay, how long ago was the list completed?
I don't know, sir, I haven't seen it. I have just heard that, I heard that today.
What's that? Well, I'm a little confused, Mr. Carmichael, a little confused that you, something wasn't followed, but yet you know something wasn't followed, what wasn't followed?
I didn't say anything wasn't followed, sir, what I'm saying is that if we, if we have passed this ordinance, second and third readings, it opens it up to seventy-eight, eighty-eight, a hundred and forty, however many were tested, I don't know that, and we're gonna go through and we're gonna hire based on something that's not in the city code. That's why I wanna look at that statute, that's why I wanna look at what the legal council has told us about honoring the contract versus what's in the, in the city code.
I thought you looked at it.
I haven't had an opportunity to look at that, at that.
Okay. I, I'm confused by what you're saying to me, I, maybe I'm not getting something, but...
I apologize, I couldn't have been clearer, Gary.
Okay. Well, regardless, again, you know, you've had all kinds of legal people look at it, and I guess I just don't understand, you know, you're not willing, or you're not willing to look at their, well, their opinions, it's, it's done, they, they did all this work, this work's been in, in the works for a long, you all say you want the grant, well, you, you might want it, but whatever little nuance is going on, you're going to put it at risk and at jeopardy, so, thank you.
Mayor, my name's John Corrigan, I am, I live at fourteen eleven, or I work at fourteen eleven Harney Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm with the Law Firm of Doward, Howard and Corrigan, and I've represented the firefighters in Nebraska, Professional Firefighter Association, since nineteen ninety-eight, when I started working for them. I sat at the negotiating table for the firefighters in, in Bellevue for the Professional Firefighters Contract, and, uh, this was the issue, the article with respect to conversion of workforce. The firefighters felt that, uh, I think Mr. Herring summarized it very well, but they felt that if we're going to continue, uh, working at, at, at those wage rates, um, and the city decided then that they were gonna have a full-time department, they wanted first consideration, not the only consideration, but first, you gotta look at us first, look at our group first, and we want everybody, or as many people as, as we can, to have that opportunity within our bargaining unit. Thus you have the language that, that the city agreed to. And let's not forget how that happened. That wasn't the union saying, uh, the ultimate contract, it wasn't the union saying, uh, if we, i- i- if, you know, if we, we don't agree to this, we're gonna sue you. The union had filed a petition in the Commission of Industrial Relations. They gave the city their last best offer, the city rejected that. The city then gave the union its last best offer, which contained this provision, and the union accepted it. That's why we have this deal. Now, with respect to litigation, I mean, we've sued the city before, and we've won some, we've lost some, uh, that's the nature of enforcing contracts, but the, the fact of the matter is the city passed this ordinance that you're talking about now, uh, and then it adopted the contract, and the contract is the most recent in time, and is the statement of policy of the city as to how this is gonna be, how, uh, hiring is gonna take place within its fire department for full-time firefighters. That, that is the policy of the city, and any effort to deviate from that policy is a violation of the collective bargaining agreement. The collective bargaining agreement is not inconsistent with or legal, it is not inconsistent with the statute. If it's not inconsistent with the statute, and I've litigated a number of cases, including one involving the city of Bellevue, where Bellevue's position was, hey, uh, we can't enforce that contract that you signed with the police officers because it is inconsistent with the provisions of the Police Officers Retirement Act, uh, under Nebraska law. And the court looked at it, and this is a very common statutory interpretation effort, the court looked at it and said, you know, the first thing I have to assume is that the contract is valid because it's the, it is an legislative act of the city council. The next thing I have to assume is that the state law is also valid, and as long as I can read those two together, and at the same time not conflict them with one another, then they both have to be valid, which means you have to give the ordinance and the statute a, a reading which is reasonable, that is, that they both survive. And if you can do that, and in this place you, in this case you clearly can, then it's lawful. And why wouldn't it be lawful? Because you, as the city, have the obligation to bargain with, uh, unions, if, if there's a certified collective bargaining agent, you have the obligation to bargain over mandatory terms and subjects of, of, uh, employment and negotiation, and you did that, and you came to an agreement. And for some reason, whatever it, it might be, there's people that don't want to adhere to that agreement, and it is valid, and it's enforceable. And with that, if I, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, I'm not trying to be controversial, but I think it's, to, to, Councilman Carmichael, that's our position on the matter.
Are there others who'd like to speak?
My name is Julie Garrett, and I live in Bellevue. I would like to congratulate the council on getting this grant. And speaking as a mom, it's like, here we go again. This is a crucial part of us living in Bellevue, to have our families safe. This is a fire department, look at these professionals' faces, and they are like shaking their heads, oh my gosh, here we go again. I am not familiar with what has all gone on, but from what I've heard tonight, it has been a long time since this began. So why hasn't due diligence been done, so that at the eleventh hour, this may not go through, and there's a, a very good possibility, in my opinion, from what I've heard tonight, that this grant could be lost? I don't understand this, I don't understand this. For such important things, and with, with the amount of work that's been done to get, obtain this grant, why are we here right now at this point? The other thing was, this gentleman back here mentioned that if Bellevue doesn't get this grant, that FEMA is gonna write off Bellevue. FEMA is going to be a, is a crucial part of, um, saving Offutt Air Force Base. These levees have got to be fixed, or Offutt will shut down. There is no question, and everybody knows it, and this is looming over our heads. And if this gentleman is correct, which I do not doubt for a second, and I'm not taking anything away, please, from the issue right now, I think we all gotta kinda stop being so narrow on this, look at the big picture, these are, this is our fire department keeping our families safe, and this is also repercussions of, uh, losing as the biggest employer in the state, at least in, in Bellevue. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Blood?
I, I just wanna clarify on the due diligence, that's actually part of the issue, is that due diligence has been done, and there are certain council members that don't agree with what we've been told, um, by our very competent, uh, legal person, Amy Battalion, who never ceases to disappoint me. Um, and we've also depended heavily on the information we've received from the fire chief, so this is not an issue of due diligence, this is an issue of people disagreeing about certain points of the issue. As far as research goes, I did my research when it was up for the first reading, not knowing if we were going to suspend the, the, the readings. And so I had ample time at that time to do my research, and I don't understand how adding additional time is gonna give us additional time, why we need additional time to research, we've been given several weeks to do that already. Um, you know, if you wanna vote no against it, vote no against it, but let's just decide. Let's get it done. If you wanna vote no, vote no, but at least give us the opportunity to take the vote tonight.
Rick Sanders, five oh seven Martin Drive. Um, there are a lot of issues that have been raised, um, some are emotional and important issues. Fire safety in our community is one, uh, getting the grant is another. But I think if it's possible to boil it down to the, the key issues of ordinance, collective bargaining agreement, and statute, then it would behoove us, as a city, if we can bring this issue as far as the collective bargaining agreement and the ordinance into, into sync now. The city passed a collective bargaining agreement that may be, um, inconsistent with our ordinances. I think it behooves the city council to honor that contract, whether you believe the process for hiring is correct or not, to bring those into sync. That is, pass this ordinance, or at least vote on it, and, and, and adopt a procedure that's consistent with that collective bargaining agreement, that's your responsibility. You may not like it, but the city's already taken a position by approving that collective bargaining agreement, and I think you councilmen, members need to honor that. Secondly, the legal issue with the statute, that can be decided later. There's a one point seven three million dollars on the table, and it's, it's just time determinant. We've been doing this, we've been following this hiring procedure for a long time, I think we can swallow hard, those of you that don't like it or don't think it's legal, and, and, and put that issue off. Legal issues take a long time to resolve, they could take years. So push that off until this grant's in place, we're, we're all, you know, pulling the, the team in the same direction with a consistent collective bargaining agreement and ordinance, and, uh, then let's file lawsuits down the line if we need to. Perhaps that issue of the, the state statute and the, and the compatibility can be resolved without litigation, but after we go forward. Thank you.
Councilman Blood?
Mr. Sanders, just for the record, what do you do, what is your, your, what do you do for a job? Can't think of the word, your employment?
Profession.
Profession, thank you, it's been a long night.
I'm a, uh, real estate developer and owner and operator of Richmond Village Senior Living.
Don't you have a legal background too?
I do, I'm a, yes, I'm a member of the Nebraska Bar and the Kansas Bars, Bar Association.
And so I appreciate your opinion, thank you.
Thank you.
Council, Sandeep, did you have a question?
Not a question, but just a statement for Councilman Carmichael. You could look at that state statute for the next two months, and it wouldn't be any clearer. It's written ambiguously, we can't even get lawyers to agree on it. Um, so I don't, I don't know that another two weeks will, you know, will, will change any minds, but in my opinion, the only option we have is to uphold the con, the current contract.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Leanne Gifford again, Mr. Carmichael, I wanted to let you know, I graduated from the Creighton School of Law in nineteen ninety-eight, and I've been licensed in Nebraska and Iowa, and I just kinda wondered where you got your law degree. I said, it's ambiguous, and as long as the ordinance is not in conflict with the statute, which it is not in my opinion, and that's free legal advice, you don't get that very often, then it's okay to do this. If your concern is, we might get sued, pull the trigger tonight and find out if you do. Wait three we, why would you wanna waste that time? Why would you wanna wait three weeks and put things that much further behind in time? If that's your only concern is, well, what if the Civil Service Commission sues us? It's not gonna make a difference as to whether they sue you, you know, after their meeting on Wednesday, or if it's going to be later, or if it's going to be the, uh, Professional Firefighters Association. I mean, I believe that you made a comment about being concerned about a lawsuit.
I'm concerned that we hire the most qualified people for the job.
And you're thinking that if there's twenty-three people listed on the list, those top twenty-three based on a paper and pencil test are going to be more qualified than people who have more experience but maybe don't test as well?
Ma'am, I did not set up the Civil Service qualifications, I just want us to abide by the rules and regulations that we have established.
And what I'm saying is, you can change those rules and regulations to give you a bigger pool to choose from. If I were opening a new business and I needed to hire twenty people, I wouldn't interview just twenty-two, I'd probably interview, I don't know, fifty, sixty, I don't know. I wouldn't just go with the first twenty that came along, because I would wanna see what all is out there. You're not looking at just who can answer questions well, you also have to look at, what are these personalities like? These people are gonna be working together twenty-four hours a day, they have to be able to get along. And let's all, let's face it, there's personality conflicts, there's people that I work with that, personality-wise, I don't get along with, but I manage to work with them, but if I had to work with them twenty-four hours at a shot, I think I'd have to kill them. You know? And yes, that's a joke, okay, that was no threat against anybody. So there's more to it than just being able to answer questions on a test, there's a lot more to it than that. The test hasn't looked yet at... The test hasn't looked yet at, how many years have you been on? Yet, were you a volunteer? And you've got 20 years' experience? Or are you someone who's only been on the last two years? It doesn't sort any of that out. That only comes out after the interview process. And what Chief Guido wants is a bigger pool for that interview process. Or actually, it's not the chief that's asking for it. It's the former volunteers and the part-timers are asking for it. Give us all a good chance to get into this. I don't understand why that's, it's fair. I mean, what you guys have been paying them is pathetic in terms of what they do. And that was part of what they bargained for. We'll take less wages because they want to be firefighters. Look at how many we've lost to other cities. Lincoln's ready to hire again. We're going to lose more. I mean, if nothing else, we've proven that Bellevue knows how to train firefighters. But the number of years of experience has got to be dwindled down drastically just because of how many people have gone to Omaha, Lincoln, Kansas City, Papillion. They've gone everywhere. I don't understand why you won't at least agree to make the decision tonight instead of putting it off for three weeks. That's what I don't get. And Mr. Cook, the same way with you. I don't understand why you don't want to make the decision tonight.
Councilwoman Blood.
Mayor, I'd ask that the head of the union come forward again, so I'd ask him a question. Can you have the people that are here that are firemen for Bellevue raise their hands for me, so I can see who's in the audience? I want to ask everybody kind of a collective question, so we're not going to...
Okay.
Okay, keep standing. So I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Choice A, if somebody is fighting a fire with you, and they happen to be the highest test scorer, is that the person you're going to trust over a person who maybe got a tenth of a percent lower test score, but maybe had two years' experience? If it's A, I want you to sit down. If it's B, I want you to sit down. You don't want the person with experience? Was it, did I make it confusing? Did I say it wrong?
It got very confusing.
Okay, A is the person that maybe scored a little bit higher, but doesn't necessarily have the experience. B is the person who maybe scored like a tenth of a percent less, but has the experience. Who do you want in a fire, A or B? B, sit down. A, keep standing.
I'd be sitting down.
All right. That's, when I hear that we want the most experience, that's the first thing that comes to mind. I cannot imagine, and I've heard some stories already, I can't imagine being in a fire with somebody that doesn't have your back. I worked for the prison system for six years, maximum security. And when you brought in a Neil fight, and you had to go and break up a fight with people that were twice your size, especially when I was pregnant and worked at the prison, you wanted that person that came to that fight with you to know what the heck they were doing, because all we had were radios. We don't have guns in prisons. And you guys have limited means to put out that fire. The number one tool you have are your wits and your experience. And so we want to hire the most qualified. We're saying, hey, we know we've hired the chief, the fire chief, and we think you're awesome. We know we've hired the battalion chief, and we think you're awesome. But, you know, beyond that, we don't think we know what you're doing. And we're not going to give you the benefit of the doubt and give you this tool to do a better job of hiring. I just, I can't grasp my brain around that. It doesn't make sense to me. It makes sense to move forward and get this done. And if you don't agree with it, vote against it. But why don't we want to give them what they want? It doesn't make sense to me. This is about the safety and security. This isn't about states, the state statute is, this is not the first state statute issue we've had. Steve, you're in Ward One because of a state statute issue we had. Now, some of us felt it needed to go to a vote, and others didn't. This is another one of those issues. Sometimes we just have to be bold and decide what's the right thing to do ethically, whether it's the popular thing to do or not. And sometimes I vote for things that I personally am not in favor of, but I know is better for Bellevue. Gosh, I'm sorry, I just, and I'm sorry I made you guys all confused and just stand there and look at me like RCA dog.
We still have public, we're open for public hearing on this, so if you want to...
Gary Mixon one last time. They probably scored higher than you, Mrs. Blood, on the test. Just to lighten it up a little bit. My only other comment is, you're sending messages here, and they're not very good. First of all, the lady that spoke just before talked about the training, and we're losing firemen. We do a good job training them, and we're losing them. So, you know, you're spending money for that training. We're spending money for that training. We're losing them. One aspect, just another little one, so, and I don't want to talk about dollars and cents all the time, but what message do you send to these guys? I mean, what message do you send to the guys that are part-time right now? The only thing they want is a chance to be hired full-time if they want to be firefighters. And I don't know what else to say. I hope Mr. Cook and Mr. Carmichael, one or both, would change their mind, let it go to the vote, deal with things after the fact. Don't concede another 21 days. So if you really, I mean, I've heard you say you want the grant. Okay, if you really want the grant, step up and make it happen.
Well, I'm John Westcott, and I'm not a lawyer. I did join the Bellevue Volunteer Fire Department in 1965, and I've been trying my best to do something ever since. I can tell you that some time ago, our city has decided they wanted to transition to a full-time fire department, a paid fire department. Well, that takes money. We've got a chance to get $1.7 million. And there again, not being a lawyer, and I understand if a person thinks something isn't right, they've got to try to stick with their guns. But we're looking at $1.7 million. We're talking about transitioning to a full-time department. It's going to happen. Are we going to use the $1.7 million to help that happen? The second point I would like to make is, having been on the fire department since 1965, I don't believe there's anyone more qualified to pick the group of people that are going to work than the command staff of the fire department. And I understand that, you know, possibly the 1, 2, 3 guys are the ones that somebody wants to see in a position. But there again, you're talking about people that are going to live together, work together, and everything else. I mean, it's not that one person isn't necessarily as good as the next one, but there are certain groups of people that are going to fit in and be able to do the job better. And I don't think there's anybody more qualified than our command staff to make that decision. That's all. Thank you.
Hi, Dustin Tilak again, a concerned firefighter from the area. One more quick thing. I'm sorry to step up again, but I think this is important because departments around the area, if you have fewer than five years on the job, you don't, you might see the driver's seat. If you have fewer than seven years on the job, you might see the driver's seat, but likely you probably won't see the captain's seat. You've got to have somewhere between eight and 10 years to see that captain's seat, where you're calling the shots on a rig. Down here in Bellevue right now, you have guys that have less than a year and a half on calling the shots. So in essence, what's going to happen here is, if things don't get changed, you have a kid that has six months on the job, and if, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's what, that you needed to test. You have firefighter A that has six months on the job, but he's a great tester, no experience, he's a go-getter. And then you have firefighter B, who has a lot of experience. Bellevue sent him through hazmat tech training. Bellevue has stayed with him for four or five years, paying money to go to fire school, to do all these things. So next thing you know, firefighter B has all these credentials, all this experience, all this fire experience, going into these IDLH, immediately dangerous to life and health situations, where if stuff hits the fan, you need somebody who knows what's going on. And, but firefighter B isn't a good tester. So what's going to happen? He's going to get left out of this testing process. And I just, I hate to see this. And I hate to see it on a personal level, fire departments from around the area, Papillion, Omaha, that are running in with these guys, because it's not only affecting this department and the kids and the families that are involved here, it's the outside departments, it's the safety of those guys, too, because we all have to work together. So at the end of the day, it all boils down to experience. And that written test and the physical test has nothing to do with that. If you can open it up to everybody, and the command staff can look at that, look at all those credentials, see all the hundreds of hours that these guys that were hired on four or five years ago that have been putting on, you know, grinding every day to try to get to a career department. That's why I had to leave this department, because I wanted to start a family. I couldn't afford to stay down here. This is where I wanted to be. This is the place that I love. But I had to move on because I couldn't get paid what I needed down here. So, long and short of it is, we need to look at the big picture here, and that's experience. It's not about a test. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And Mr. Sullivan, if you would remind us where we are at this point.
The motion on the floor to waive the three statutory readings and bring the matter to a vote is on the floor.
So we've had a motion. We've also had the second. We've had plenty of discussion. Mr. Preister.
I would just ask our legal counsel to also comment on the statute that's been a subject tonight. We've heard from three attorneys saying that the statute is ambiguous, or intentionally could even be, and that often statute is. I would concur. But if we have conflict between a legal contract with our firefighters and with state statute, how does that sit? Can you give us, and the interpretation of the state statute?
Sure. I think the problem is that the statute just does an extremely poor job of handling multiple vacancies. It deals pretty well with a vacancy, but it's pretty unclear as to multiple vacancies. So to the extent that you can adopt anything within a contract and/or your own ordinances that are at least consistent with the statute, or that aren't in conflict with the statute, then you're legal. It'd be great if they'd give us further clarity in the statute, but the fact of the matter is they don't. And I think maybe on my end, a little bit, or our office end, you know, I can maybe take a little blame as to why we're sitting here at this point, because we probably should have changed this ordinance much earlier, right after we changed the contract. But it's probably, when I say hindsight is 20/20, but we deal with things that we make changes with, that we try to comply with and make sure that we're complying with the statute. From the standpoint that if it's in violation of an ordinance, I know that I can go back, and this body can change the ordinance. I can't necessarily get a statute changed. So we always want to make sure that we're complying with the statute, in which we believe that through this process, we are compliant with the statute. There are multiple ways that you could handle multiple vacancies. I have no dispute in that regard, and I can't say one method's better or more correct than another. But the end of the day is, because we went and contracted, and our most recent action was to do it in this process, the logical process to then proceed on is, to the extent that any of our ordinances are in conflict with what we contracted for, that we then amend those ordinances to make them come in conformity with the contract. And that's merely what we're doing in this process.
Rita.
Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been a lot of compelling discussion tonight on this thing. I've read what Pat gave me. I see both sides of it. This has not been an easy decision for me, and I want all of you guys that are on this job to know that. The issue for me right now is whether or not I change my vote. And I change the vote if I do, knowing that I've got to work with Pat, the union, the fire department, to make our ordinances and our contracts similar. You'll bring contracts before us in the future when we vote on those. I will be looking at that. Pat, the position I'm going to take, I'm going to take. I need you to work with me on collectively getting these ordinances and union contracts in sync.
Essentially, that's what we're doing tonight. Unfortunately, it just became a pinch with the amount of time that we are dealing with. But there's going to be, we will constantly be in a position where we're going to have to amend ordinances, whether it's changing laws, changing how we function, or otherwise.
And I'd like to thank the public for the compelling testimony you gave tonight, too, please.
Any more discussion? Are you sure we're ready to vote? I know it hasn't been easy. Please vote.
All voted yes.
Give us just a minute, just a minute. Councilwoman Blood.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 3763.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Knutson. Any discussion?
Just to make a point of clarity, as it's presented in the packet, correct?
As it's presented in the packet.
Any discussion? See no further discussion? Please vote.
And the vote is five to one. It carries.
Thank you all for your hard work. Thank you for your patience. We move on to do the right thing. Thank you. Are we ready, Kay?
I am.
Thank you. Move on to item number nine, ordinance for introduction, first reading, 9A, ordinance number 3764. Kay, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 3764, an ordinance to amend Section 19-23 of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to the publication of a general notice of the requirements of Article III of Chapter 19 of the Bellevue Municipal Code to repeal Section 19-23 of the Bellevue Municipal Code as heretofore existing and to provide for an effective date.
Thank you. That was the first reading. The second and public hearing will be in three weeks, on April the 14th. Item number 10, public hearing on matters other than ordinance, 10A, site plan approval for Lot 1, Daniel Farm addition for multifamily residential development. Mr. Sullivan.
Just to avoid any appearance impropriety, I represent the owner of the property, not the applicant of the property. The applicant is trying to purchase the property from the owner. But I don't have any involvement in the planning process or what has been done with respect to the site plan.
Good evening, everyone. Doug Hill, Hill Feral Associates, representing the applicant here this evening. We were before we decided, we're asking for a site plan approval and approval of a mixed-use agreement on approximately seven-and-a-half acre parcel at the northwest corner of 36th and Capeport Road. This was originally part of the Daniels Farm property. As you may recall, Dr. Wayne Labard acquired this property last fall. He has since entered into a contract with Chadwick Apartments LLC for this development. Our development consists of five buildings. Will contain a total of 90 apartment units. They're broken down. 60 of the units will be two-bedroom apartments. 20 of the units will be single, one-bedroom apartments, and 10 units will be three-bedroom apartments. The apartments range in size from about 680 square feet up to a little over 1,000 square feet. The apartment developer is familiar with Bellevue, has had several, it's the Clattermuck family, has had several apartments in Bellevue. So we've got a local builder, local developer, shown confidence in community, acquired the site, and wants to develop another apartment project. I do have, I'll just kind of hold it up here for simplicity. Do have a site plan here that's the same one you have in your packet. Couple important things I think I want to bring to everybody's attention. I know there has been some confusion, maybe some questions about our access. We've spent a great deal of time through this... In addition, on the very northerly property line, we have a future driveway that will be, excuse me, the driveway I just referred to will be built during the construction of the apartment projects initially. The northernmost driveway is anticipated that that driveway will be a shared access with the property owner to the north, which is St. Matthew's Catholic Church. There will be a median break at that location, so that will be a full-access driveway. The agreement within the mixed-use agreement calls for that driveway to be completed and serviceable in conjunction with the 36th Street improvements. So it won't be there until 36th Street's improvements are done and that median break is there. In addition, I would draw your attention in the mixed-use agreement, there's also provisions for two future driveway locations on Capeport Road to serve the commercial property. We are not requesting any action on the commercial property tonight, other than their participation in the mixed-use agreement. There is no plan out there for development. There is no developer on that parcel at this time. However, staff and the property owner felt it was important to try to resolve and land on the access for that. So the access that is included in the mixed-use agreement is very similar to what we've done on 36th Street. We have one driveway access point that will be a right-in, right-out, and then further to the west will be a full-access driveway in the future to serve that property. The mixed-use agreement also calls for a connection from our property to that commercial property, ultimately to Capeport Road, so we have full-through traffic movement at that point. So, other than that, I think, you know, I think the site plan is fairly straightforward and simple, unless there's specific questions someone may have. I'll stop there.
Mr. Cook.
Jeff, I probably should ask you earlier today, that north route that is in the future, was that in the plans for 36th Street to be a full break? My only concern is, I don't know what's directly across from it, and if you continued west, or I'm sorry, east. And is there any other breaks? I'm going to try to see if I can, I'm trying to figure out where St. Matthews is from that property. Does it abut St. Matthews' property?
St. Matthews is straight north of us on that side.
Okay. I didn't know if there was another planned break going north, because I know there's some land north of those barns and west of the, I just don't know where the breaks are. Was this a planned break on 36th Street controlled by a light when we were looking at the plans, say, several months ago on 36th Street improvements?
Yeah, there are plans for other full-access intersections on 36th. Right at the moment, I couldn't tell exactly where they're at. The one that we're talking about now with the borders, these two properties, the original plans, this was a solid median through here, but working with Doug and the developer, we located this full-access, what is outside the functional area of the intersection. In other words, it means this drive's not going to impact any left turns, right turns, or anything like that. And that's why we located where it is. But I really can't answer your question, because I don't have the exact location of where the other breaks are at, nor.
And my only concern is down the road, if this wasn't.
The reason this intersection is where it's at and being shared is because there won't be another full-access break here until you get further north, though. We're not going to have drives, multiple drives dumping onto 36th Street once it's completed. Otherwise, there'd be no purpose in putting any medians in it, if everything's broken for driveways.
Any other questions to the council? This is open for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
Father Ron Wazakowski, I am the pastor at St. Matthews. And our property abuts on the north side, this proposed development. And the biggest question we have is accessibility for our property. We have not dealt with an easement on that north end, as you can see on the design, so that has not been resolved. I'm not saying we're going to obstruct it. I just wish we could get something on paper so that we could deal with it specifically. And I do have a question. A lot of this is based on assuming 36th Street improvements. When are we going to see a plan for this?
Mr. Roberts, would you like to address this?
Plans have already been out there. We've had a couple of public information meetings where the plans have been revealed. We'll be having a public hearing, probably, I think, late summer, we'll be having a public hearing. And, yeah, I mean, the plans are out there. They've been given to the public to view.
We hosted a public meeting three years ago in June, coming up to three years. One year ago in June, there was another public meeting, of which many of our members attended. And at that meeting, there were four proposals. We were asked to vote and comment upon them. I received back and we reviewed the two proposals that seemingly were the most popular or the preferred options, but we were assured no decisions were made yet. True?
That was at that time, yeah. Since then, we've gone through the proper procedures with the environmental, and we do have a preferred alternative that's being brought forward.
When is the next public meeting?
Probably the end of the summer is when we'll have the next one.
And then what is the timeline for developing 36th Street?
Then we will start with the right-of-way acquisition, which will carry us through 2014, 2014, 2015.
And then construction?
Construction starts immediately after right-of-way acquisition.
So give or take summer of 2015?
It'll probably be later than that. It'll probably be more like in the fall, before they start doing some winter work. It's all contingent on federal highway approval and our environmental assessment.
Second question then is, our current access, which serves our school and offices, which is north of where we're talking now, will that continue to be full access?
Like I stated, I don't have those plans in front of me. I'm not really, I don't have off the top of my head what we're doing right there.
Can we receive a copy of this plan that everyone seems to be referencing?
If you want to come up and visit, yeah, that'd be fine.
Because the last I've had is the four proposals.
Mr. Roberts or Mr. Shuchek, will you be sure that Father gets a copy and just review that with him? Mr. Roberts?
Sure.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. Father, it's good to see you. In addition to giving the invocation occasionally, but just to let you know, none of us have seen that final plan either. It's been going through the process, so it's preferred and still being finalized in the environmental assessment. So you're not the only one. Lots of people are interested in seeing that, and so it isn't like it's just privileged information. It is working through the process.
Okay, thank you.
And I respect and understand your concern about access for the parishioners, for people dropping off children for school, ingress, egress. And I'm understanding from what you said that maybe the dialogue between you and the developer hasn't been so good or could be better?
There was no dialogue prior to the planning board meeting of what, three, four weeks ago? Since then, Doug and I have miscommunicated. It's been phone-tagged, trying to touch base.
Okay.
I think we're in mutual agreement that, correct me if I'm wrong, this will be beneficial to both of us for the shared access, but we have not worked out any details yet.
Okay. And your main concern is that shared access on the south side, so you're, the parishioners can enter and exit there too, which would be beneficial for them and you.
In the long term, because currently that is agricultural.
Right.
And we anticipate building a church there, but we have no date, no design. We don't know when this is going to happen.
Sure.
So the shared access will not benefit us in the short term. In the long term, it definitely will.
Okay. And your telephone tag will end soon, we hope, and those things?
We talked a while this afternoon. It's simply, there's nothing on paper yet.
Okay. Good. Thank you for appearing tonight.
Yes, phone tag definitely will end. As Father stated, we've had difficulty connecting up to sit down, and I certainly share his concern, understand his concerns about a document that emphasizes where things are going to be. The developer is speaking on his behalf, you know, he's going to be very easy to work with. He recognizes the benefit that access is important to him. As this thing first started, we really thought the driveway was going to be on our side, and through looking at it with city everything, it obviously made sense to center it when we talked about the median break and everything. So, you know, we're certainly going to work with them, get an agreement that works for them. We need an easement on their property. They need an easement on our property, so it should be mutually beneficial for everybody. So I wouldn't anticipate any problems putting together an agreement. And we will begin on that immediately to get the final document put together.
I appreciate that reassurance.
And please don't misinterpret. We are not opposed to this development. We want to be good neighbors and develop together. So I just raised the question so that we can have full accessibility to our property, too.
But this drive that we're looking at on the north side of these apartments that you would share would be to your satisfaction, because there's going to be a break in the median?
Absolutely, because it would be full access.
Okay.
Now, the secondary concern I have is, what does that mean to our current accessibility? It is full access on 36th Street as it stands. We don't want that to change, because this is so further north. Okay. Thank you.
Are there others that would like to speak on this item? I'll close the public hearing. What are the wishes of the council? Mr. Knutson.
I'll make a motion that we approve the site plan for Lot 1, Daniel Farms addition.
Second.
Second by Ms. Sanyuk. Any discussion? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Mr. Knutson.
I'll make a motion that we approve the mixed-use agreement.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 11, resolutions. Resolution number 2014-07, amending the master fee schedule to add references to statutes and ordinance numbers 3759 and 3760. Mr. Knutson.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number 2014-07, amending the master fee schedule.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 11, resolutions. Resolution number 2014-07, amending the master fee schedule to add references to statutes and ordinance numbers 3759 and 3760. Mr. Knutson.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number 2014-07, amending the master fee schedule.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 12, current business. 12A, B, C, and D are under consent. Leaves us with item 12E, approval of lease camp Dodge Iowa training facility for annual SWAT training. Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Knutson. Any discussion? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. 12F, approval of an amendment to the lease agreement for the Roderick Building at 201 West Mission Avenue. Councilwoman Blood?
Motion to approve. Second.
Second by Councilwoman Sanyuk. Any discussion? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Takes us to item 13, public request to be heard. Any member of the public addressing the council shall abide by council policy number resolution 35 regarding principles of conduct and decorum, which states, "Any statement made during the council meetings by the mayor, members of the city council, city officials, and employees, or members of the general public shall not involve personal impotent or slanderous attacks on individuals, regardless of whether the individual so attacked is an elected official, a city official, or employee, or a member of the general public," in City Code 268. Regarding the manner of addressing the council, copies of the aforementioned rules are posted outside the council chambers. Speakers shall limit their presentation to five minutes." And I want to welcome, we have a couple that's been sitting here for two and a half hours to speak. It is their first council meeting, I believe. This is your time to speak for five minutes. You want to come forward? You could sign in first and then state your name for the record.
I live at 610 Nob Hill Terrace in Bellevue. I don't even know who my ward, what ward we're in, but we have a Club Mega that just opened on January 1st. We've had nothing but problems every weekend from then on. The police have gone up and beyond their duty to try to get them to quiet the noise. Sometimes it starts at 11:30 at night, sometimes it starts at 1:30 at night. We have fighting, we have broken bottles, we have to call the police numerous times. And, you know, if they're warned once to shut the music lower, I think you should abide by this, but they've had a citation, from my understanding, every weekend they've been open. And once they get a citation, the music gets louder. We've had a person for security for them come to our home and pose as a Bellevue police officer. And then he changed it that he was an off-duty Omaha officer and told us to contact him, not the Bellevue police, because they were working with the Bellevue police. Well, come to find out, this person was not an officer nowhere. He's the security for this Club Mega. And we've had the owner of Club Mega drive by our homes up on Nob Hill at 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning after they've been warned of the noise. My husband gets up at 5:00 in the morning and go to work. My grandsons think that somebody's trying to break into our house because of the banging. It's not music. It's loud thumping. There's nothing about music to it. And like I said, the fighting goes on. I understand Bellevue wants to bring business to town, but they're closing our business on Fort Crook, the QT, when they let out at night, because they steal so much. What kind of business did they bring to town? Nothing but fighting and loud music. We get nothing out of it. We lose sleep. They can't pay us back in sleep. And every time they go to court, not guilty. So what can we do about it?
Chief, would you like to address this?
Yeah, I will. We have been there numerous, numerous times, and as you well know, Mayor, we met with the owner and his attorney with Dan as well. These are all issues that we were trying to work through. I guess it's due process, if you will. I would correct one thing. That would be news to me that they have gone to court on any of these citations and been not found guilty. It's my understanding, they have not been to court yet, and it's our hope that when they do appear before a judge, that some of this will be resolved. They have several citations that are pending. When I say several, I believe it's maybe upwards of a dozen. I could be wrong on that number. And then we're also working with the liquor commission as well. So there are some things that we are doing to be fair and to run that due process. I understand your frustration, and my officers are trying to be very helpful. At the same time, there are certain legal restrictions that we have on what we can and what we can't do at this juncture. So it's a process, and hopefully there will be some sort of resolution in the near future for you, but it's very much on our radar as well, as you all know.
No, they have been to court, but they pleaded not guilty, because I got a letter in the mail. But I look at it like this, if they've been warned once to turn the music down and they don't do it, when the officers have to go back down there, why can't their music be shut off? They've been warned. I mean, these police officers, we're taking their time to do this when they could be out doing other things. They go above and beyond their duty. I've met almost every police officer on the force. I've met almost every police officer on the force now, and my dog knows a lot of them.
Chief Albert, could you explain why we can't just shut them down?
Well, i-if it's noise as it's related, we issued the citation, that's within the legal, um, authority that we have, um, it, it would take much more than that for us to actually go in and close their business down, I, I would assume that there, that we would be receiving all kinds of, uh, that's not within their due process, uh, if you will, by law, unless Mr. Sullivan would correct me on that some way, we don't have any authority as police officers to shut it down, uh, due to noise, um, would be my understanding.
I know we've had this trouble in Bellevue before, about noise ordinance, but they've even bought, the word is out, they've bought scanners so they know when the police are coming now. They've even locked the door one time, and they were warned that the fire department would open it if they locked it again, but it's just, you know, they're out of hand, they're totally out of hand, and the police do what they can do, I understand that, but I was leaving it up to our ward guy to do something about them.
I, I would just like to make a comment to the council, is, I think, when we were looking at this, I thought it was said, I think I even asked the question, that, uh, that his restaurant be, would be his main business, and that the music would be sort of secondary and periodically, and once in a while, and we'll see what we can do.
Knock on wood, they weren't even open last weekend, we got some sleep.
So, I, you know, I, I guess my concern is, and I have all the trust in the chief's and his department and guys and gals, that they'll resolve this, but I, I just wondering if, if maybe, I haven't been there, I used to live on your street, and I would, my concern was music going up that hill.
It's loud.
Used to live on Nob Hill, um, that was a concern, but I, I just wondering if we weren't somewhat misled, I'm not accusing that, 'cause I've never been in that facility or in that place, but if this is every weekend, I, I can honestly say, I did not anticipate that when this came in front of the council, and we voted on it.
Councilman Cook is correct, and, you know, we warned them in advance, and asked Chief Albert, both him and I talked to the man when he was putting in his, uh, to set that up down there, and we were told, yes, it was gonna be a restaurant with music, you know, and, but part of it is, the zoning down there has been for years, so it is that they can have that business in there, so it's not within our power to tell them they can't have that business.
We don't want them not to have a business.
I, I understand that, but I mean, that, we're working within the constraints that we can right now.
Okay.
And yes, I have been working with Chief Albert, uh, we've been talking quite a bit back and forth, um, I have actually been inside that club before it opened, and I mean, as much money as this man spent in that club, I can't believe he'd wanna lose his business, but it doesn't seem like, you know, but we have to be very careful about what we do and how we do it.
I totally understand.
Otherwise, we have another lawsuit.
Well, he said that we're all picking on him, 'cause he's Hispanic, everybody bleeds red, so, there ain't no picking on nobody, he's picking on QT with what happens for them, his business is causing them problems. We just wanna work with the law, however, it's gotta be done.
I just wanted to make you, we are very aware of it, and we are working on it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I have five letters going out to the Liquor Commission from neighbors.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, the main purpose of the public request to be heard is so that we can hear what you need to say, but because they're not really agenda items, we can't have a full discussion on it.
All right.
Um, but I, I will tell you that your, your voice isn't being unheard, uh, and, um, there is a balancing act that the, that we have to do for both the residents and the businesses, uh, but nobody's rights are being ignored, and it is being heard.
And we hear you loud and clear, and thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't say this was a long meeting, but I think one volunteer already got hired by another city. We have, I have talked about the YouTube, and I've got many comments about people who are watching the city councils on YouTube now, and so, uh, and they find that very, uh, efficiently, efficient, because they can scroll down to whatever watch, whatever they wanna watch, they can watch. Um, I don't know if you know this or not, but I think most of you do, but some of the people who are watching may not know this, but, uh, I am the guy that got the public requests to be heard on the agenda, and that was May 2008, and, so I've spoken about 130 times, that's about 15 years I've been up here speaking, and, uh, something happened in the last meeting, which is, uh, which, uh, has never happened before, that's when a councilperson got down and spoke at the, at the public forum. Maybe we should change it to public requests to be heard for the public and also any elected official wants to come down and speak too. I think it was grandstanding myself, it's ironic that the person who came down to speak was the one who, a few years back, wanted to, wanted to, uh, stop public requests to be heard.
Mr. Frederick, please don't pick out on one of the council members, do not...
I didn't see her name.
You need to, you cannot single anyone out, you can address us as a body, please.
Well, I think I was picked, singled out when she spoke.
Mr. Frederick, I'm not here to debate you.
Okay, well, I, I'm not a martyr, I'm not a martyr, I'm not a Joan of Arc, I won't die for my cause, it's, uh, it's, uh, I, I am definitely concerned about how this city is run, and, um, I have, I can't say my website either, of course, but I did get an email from somebody, and I'm just gonna read part of it, and this email said, this fellow said, "I was born and raised in Bellevue, and still live here today, 33 years old. I read your website a little, and I like what you have to say and how you have to say it. You see, the thing is this, I love my city, but currently, I can't, I can think of nothing better to do than move." And he says, "Why?" He said, "Because of how it's run. The old crony network has, has got to go, it's not about picking this thing or that thing, it just need to go. They have way too much to say in this town, and the residents are flat-out blind to what is going on." So, that's part, that's only part of the email, but, uh, I've been accused of, of being negative, I'm not negative when I'm trying to find the right answers for questions regarding our fiscal responsibility, that, that's positive, you look at the, my website, you look at the, the minutes for, the meetings for the last five, six years, you're gonna see a lot of positive, positive things that I've said, uh, but I am concerned how this city is run, uh, you raised the taxes this year, you raised the next, you're gonna raise it next year, you cut our services, our swimming pools aren't, aren't being, haven't been maintained for the last four years, uh, you won't, uh, you won't, you have nothing on this, uh, splash pad, when somebody came up here to talk about it, was willing to spend some money and spend some time, uh, you closed the library one day, we should be having the second library, uh, I just think that, uh, there's no transparency, I've asked about the $550,000 for, that the fire department couldn't collect, and you guys tried to collect it, I've asked about the task force, uh, members who are on them, no response on that, uh, right here I have the City of Bellevue Final Report, September 2013, so that's, that's for the whole year, end of the year, fiscal year, and I've got on here, according to the report for the fiscal, for your, what you spent, it says you spent $431,358 for legal fees. Mr. Sullivan was up making a presentation, uh, and I have a copy of that, and, uh, says for the 2012, 2013 year, the average monthly cost was $22,170. You divide that $43,000 by 12, that's $35,000, $35,000 a, a month, so there's obviously something's wrong there, but, uh, I, I just think that if people look and see just what's going on, look at what I've had to say about positive things here going on in Bellevue, what can be done, suggestions I have given, uh, I think you'll see that, uh, I'm certainly not the negative one, I'm just trying to...
Your time is up, Mr. Frederick, thank you.
Are you sure?
We set our watch too, and your time is up, thank you.
Well, I can ask for the people to, you know, I can ask again for people to vote on this, just like I had before, if you're gonna, this other person spoke five or 10 minutes, or 10 minutes at least, this other couple, you know, so if you wanna try to stop me, Mary, you can, but I wanna vote.
Ms. Sanyuk?
You asking for a vote?
Extend.
To, to continue, yes.
Mr. Preister?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
That's typical, thank you.
No discussion, please vote.
Who did you take as the second mayor?
Um, second, Ms. Sanyuk.
Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Preister.
Hold on.
The vote is four to two.
Thank you, have a good night.